Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:03 on Wednesday afternoon. It is Wednesday, March 8th, and I'd like to call the Tallahassee City Commission to order. It's great to see everybody. Started us off properly with the invocation. I would like to invite Reverend Anne Apple, the interim senior pastor of First Presbyterian Church here in downtown Tallahassee. First of all, welcome to Tallahassee.
Thank you.
We are thrilled to have you here, and thank you for being here for the invocation. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand?
Let us pray. Alpha and Omega, first and last, beginning and end. For everything there is a season and a time for every matter under heaven, and especially on earth. There was evening then morning that first day which brings us to this day, today of all the days. Whether we worship under the shadow of the cross, the star of David, the crescent of Islam, or any other noble pathway to God, today of all the days we stop for breath and awareness for the gift of life in this day, today of all the days. May gratitude be our taproot, grace our canopy, and kindness our trunk. You are in the midst of the city, this city, Tallahassee. You are the mother hen that draws us under the cover of your wings. You are the healer of nations, and you are here. So call down a blessing. Where people draw together for needs and necessities of all the people in Tallahassee, all the places, the whole of creation, in this beautiful big bend in Florida. Mindful of the matriarchs who came before, Sarah who laughed at the seemingly impossible but she trusted, Hagar who pleaded not to look upon the death of a child, Hagar who trusted in the voice of a messenger who asked, "What troubles you? Where have you come from? Where are you going?" I pray for this body of leaders gathered and those who come to advocate for what is right, for justice, for peace. May each know joy in their work and a sense of deep satisfaction. I pray for listening that defies any culture war and prioritizes care for the most vulnerable. May each operate out of integrity and a deep sense of purpose and that which serves the common good. Curb anger, cease unkindness, and capitalize on mercy. Cultivate the art of presence and the ability to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. And may leadership here never become functionary nor maintenance of the status quo, but creative innovation for the resilience of a community and her people. This people, this Tallahassee, your good people. Today of all the days, I ask this blessing in the name of the one who, from the garden asked, "Where are you?" I ask this blessing in the name of one who is the restorer of every breach, and I ask this blessing in the name of one who gives us breath and the gift of life in this day. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend, thank you so much, and again, welcome to Tallahassee, and we are so proud to host you here today. So ladies and gentlemen, it's a great day as we celebrate International Women's Day, and we're going to have a wonderful proclamation in just a second. It is the second day of the legislative session. We have a lot to be thankful for. I'd like to invite everyone to join me, as I do at the beginning of every meeting. Let's set the example on how to do government correctly. Let's be respectful to each and every one of us that are speaking before the City Commission and the dialogue at the City Commission itself. With that, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, we do. We've added two items to your agenda item 5.03, which is a recognition of the City of Tallahassee's lineman team that participated in the recent statewide rodeo, as well as item 12.05, which is an update on the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan budget. In addition, items 1109 and 1110, which were introduction of ordinances, have been removed. The applicant withdrew the application.
So 1109 and 1110 have been deleted.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions? Wonderful. Commissioner Porter, are we connected? Can you hear us okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thanks for joining us while you're traveling. Can I have a quick motion just to approve Commissioner Porter's participation? It's been moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to take a break on every single item and ask for, if you have any comment, to make sure that you got plenty of opportunity to speak and that I don't accidentally miss over you. So just stay tuned, and we will go from there.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask all of my colleagues to please join me for three very special presentations. All right. Wonderful. So for our first presentation today, I would like to invite Nicole Sargent to please come join me up front with my colleagues. Nicole, we have a very, very, very special presentation for National Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month and Week, but I have asked, because he was the one who actually requested the proclamation, Commissioner Curtis Richardson is going to provide the proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here, Nicole. It is my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation. I've had the honor of doing this for the past several years, and in her absence, I want to recognize Ashley Peterman. She has been so diligent every year in reminding us to make this happen, and so it's my honor to present you with this proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas multiple sclerosis, or MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting nearly 1 million people in the United States alone; and whereas multiple sclerosis generally strikes people in the prime of life, between ages 20 through 50, and the cause and course of the often debilitating systems of MS remain unknown and no cure currently exists; and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is committed to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about the insight into the disease; and whereas together we have transformed what it means to live with MS and provide a global leadership to help achieve our vision of a world free of MS; and whereas since 1946 the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force in MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research; and whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel research on pathways to MS cures and invest in the MS research workforce at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the U.S. and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS; and whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is a mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society and one that all Americans and Floridians should support; and whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has shown towards a world free of MS, now therefore I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize March as and March 12th through the 18th, 2023, as Multiple Sclerosis Month and Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in the City of Tallahassee, urge all citizens to support the National Multiple Sclerosis Society and encourage Tallahassee residents with MS and their families. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed, and it's signed by our mayor, John Daley, on this day, March 8th, 2023."
Thank you, Nicole. Please.
Hi. Well, I am very happy and very blessed to be the one to accept the proclamation on behalf of everyone living with MS. It is an invisible disease that many people don't see. I had the pleasure of spending my weekend at TMH, which has awesome nurses and great meds, because you never know what they are. And people see us coming even when we park in a handicap spot. For everyone is different. For me, I may lose my sight. I may have balance issues. And I also teach, so that can pose some problems some days, but my students know. Ashley, who is usually the one here, she's currently in rehab now because she is wheelchair-bound. But everyone's fight is different, and that's one of the things that we hope and pray, especially us being in the capital city, that there can be more awareness and more research and more treatments, because I think I'm the only one who actually has a neurologist here in Tallahassee. Everyone else travels to Jacksonville or Gainesville because they need different treatments, and we need more treatment options. And we're just thankful to have it brought out in the open and for more people to be aware and not to just think that because you have an illness that it's something that people can see, because this is something that most people can't see or don't know or think that we're playing or faking or anything of that nature. But I just want to say thank you guys for doing this for us, and we are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to turn it up. Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, as we all know, is International Women's Day, and I'm going to invite all women and girls to join us down front. We are women. Hear us roar. Come on down, ladies. You'll see that many of us are dressed in white, and if you don't know why, let me just share that white is for purity, of course, but it is also the color of the women's suffrage. Come on, we can spread out. We can spread out.
I'm glad you did that, Mayor pro temp. That was my... I was like...
All right. All right. And accepting the proclamation on behalf of all women and girls is, of course, the status of women and girls.
All right.
Let's give them a big round of applause. And the Oasis Center, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm surprised. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes that women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our community, the state of Florida, our nation, and the global community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways; and whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes that women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of our community by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes that women were integral in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our community; and whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes that women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every, every, every major progressive social change movement; and whereas the City of Tallahassee recognizes that women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements yet to come, which create a more fair and just society for all; and whereas the participation of the City of Tallahassee women in these events has changed the course of history for the betterment of us all and is esteemed and valued by our community. Now therefore I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of March as and March 8th, 2023, as Women's History Month and International Women's Day. All right.
Thank you.
Kathleen. All right. Very good. A few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kathleen Brennan, and I am the president of the Board of the Directors for the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, and with me is the vice president of our board, Glenda Thornton, as well as several women from the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and you'll hear from them in a minute. I just wanted to say thank you so much. The mission of the Oasis Center is to improve the lives of women and girls through celebration and support, because as we know, when you celebrate something, you bring it to light, and you cannot ignore it. So we are very appreciative of all the support the city did. They supported our luncheon that we had last Friday. Many of you were there, celebrating local women and girls. We've been doing this for 15 years, so that is another way that we bring women's history to life, and we appreciate very much this proclamation. Now I'll have Dr. Jeanne O'Conne with the commission say a few words.
I need to lower this. On behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and I'm the vice chair of the Commission, we thank you for this proclamation, and we especially thank the mayor, because we involve him in a lot of our activities, and he always shows up. And I also want to thank Commissioner Curtis Richardson. He's an official sister-girl of the commission. And all of us are volunteers, and we work very hard on behalf of women and girls in this community. So we thank you for your support and thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Can't see the camera. We can't see you.
All right. Three, two...
I'm trying to get all of them.
Five. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Go high.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Always thank you. Know that. Thank you. Yeah, she's real senior.
I can tell.
It's taken away that I've had time, so...
Absolutely. Wonderful, wonderful one.
Struggle is real.
Don't photobomb, right? Yeah, I don't want to ruin the picture by being in.
All right.
I love it. I love it.
All right, Madam Attorney.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
She looks so happy. I'm ready to go home. I don't even want to be here.
There we go.
That's our future, okay?
That's wonderful.
Good question. I was hoping they would blur the background on this thing. I'm photobombing.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, for our final presentation and also for another very special presentation, I'd like to invite Amy Zubaly, the executive director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association, for a presentation. Amy.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I love that picture. So this past Saturday, the Florida Municipal Electric Association held its 22nd annual Florida lineman competition in Orlando. Since its inception in 2001, the annual rodeo brings together line workers from public power and cooperative utilities across the state to demonstrate their skill and knowledge in the craft of line work. During the event, competitors took on various challenges, such as replacing crossarms and insulators, replacing blown arresters, and completing a simulation of rescuing an injured lineman. Competitors earn points for completing the tasks as quickly as possible and lose points if safety standards and proper work practices are not followed. There are two divisions that compete at the competition. Journeyman teams, which include teams of three line workers who have been in the industry for five years or more, and apprentices, or line workers in training who compete individually. This year, more than 140 line workers, made up of 77 apprentices and 22 journeyman teams from 12 utilities across the state, competed for top prizes. Overall, journeyman teams competed in four events and apprentices in five events. Trophies are awarded for the top three places in each individual event, and overall scores are tabulated to determine the top five overall teams and apprentices. This year, to say that the City of Tallahassee kicked butt is an understatement.
Yeah.
In the overall journeyman division, the City of Tallahassee journeyman teams placed first, second, fourth, and fifth in the top five overall placements, giving them major bragging rights and the right to hold the winner's cup for the next year. So I did a little research on our last 22 competition events, and I have a little bit of fun facts I want to share. So no utility has ever won four of the five overall award places in either class until Tallahassee this year. In addition, a utility has only won three of the top five overall award places five times in its inception since 2001, and three of them were from Tallahassee, once in journeyman and twice for apprentice. And Tallahassee has placed in at least one of the top five overall places in either one or both of the classes in all but three years since 2001. So congratulations, not just to these guys, but to you all and all of you for having such a great utility and a great force of line workers behind you. So congratulations, guys. Well deserved.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. Amy. I can't add much more to what Amy just said with all the facts. I'm just really proud of these guys. And just to say that this is a result of the work they do every single day. It's not just for the competition. The way they compete is the way they work, and so we're real proud of them. One real quick fact, too, is in order to win the event, you have to basically complete without making any mistakes. That's typically how teams win. All four of our journeyman teams completed without making one mistake this weekend, which is, I think, also unheard of. So thank you, guys. Again, thank you, and these guys make us proud every day. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take advantage of this. So anytime we get opportunity to highlight the successes of our staff, I like to take it. But just to kind of elaborate on what Tony said, this is a result of dedication, hard work to their craft, something they do day in and day out. They embody our mission to be industry leaders, whether it's right here in Tallahassee, serving communities in mutual aid, or like this past weekend on the statewide stage where they go down there and they show out. So I'm proud of them, and I'm proud to represent the Tallahassee City of Tallahassee when we travel. So to y'all, thank you.
While you're organizing us for picture, I'm going to provide a couple of comments. So if we want to go ahead and start lining up real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a reason why the City of Tallahassee has the number one public utility in the nation, and you're looking at it right here. Our dedicated team is second to none, and you know, there's a lot of talk right now about municipally-owned electric utilities in the state of Florida, but you don't have to look anywhere but right here in our backyard to see the best of the best of the best nationally. Now, while we're getting ready for the pictures, also seriously, Jeff, I want you to take a good look. I'm calling out the Democrat reporter that's here. This is a great feel-good article. You know, this is... These are the faces of the men in the team. When storm events come through our community and we're all at home with our family waiting for the power to be restored, they're the ones leaving their family and going out in harm's way to put the power lines back up. When hurricanes hit other parts of the country, whether it's Louisiana or farther south, this is the team, along with their fellow coworkers, that are leaving their families for sometimes a week or two on end to go help other communities restore their power. This is the team during COVID that left their families while we were all home being safe to go live out at the electric utility plant in what was a reverse process so that while we're being safe and healthy, they're keeping the power going. I think it's important that we take a second to always put a human face and an individual with the incredible dedicated work that the number one public utility in the nation right here in Tallahassee has. Gentlemen, thank you very much and congratulations.
All right, everybody, right here. Come on, Mike. All right. In three, two, one. All right, one more. Three, two, one.
On a final note, Amy Zubaly, are you still in? Or I think she might have backed it. Just also want to thank Amy for all the work that she does on behalf of the Florida Electric Municipal Association and the coordinated efforts during storm season. We really do appreciate it. Okay, we are on announcements. Are there any announcements to come before the City Commission today?
No, sir.
All right, we do have appearances by other governmental entities, and at this point for 7.01, 02, 03, 04, what I would like to do is adjourn the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. I would like to call in... to order the Pension Plan Board of Trustees and turn it over to the Treasurer Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, since we're meeting as the Board of Trustees. As you all know, the Board of Trustees for the City of Tallahassee Pension Plan consists of our five elected officials as well as a representative from our police and fire personnel. Steve Tiefler from the Tallahassee Fire Department has joined us via WebEx. When we scheduled this item, we knew that he had an obligation that would take him out of town, but we very much appreciate him joining us virtually. So Mayor, or Mr. Chair, I believe it's appropriate to take an action there as we get started.
Can I have a motion to allow participation electronically?
So move.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter, I have you down as an aye as well. Then passes unanimously. Commissioner Porter, are you still with us?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. We have two items for the Board of Trustees to consider tonight. Both, each requires an action. We'll take item 703 first and then 702. But Jason Buckholz, our Deputy Treasurer Clerk, will make a brief presentation on 703, and then he'll be followed by Angel Charlton, our Retirement Administrator, on the next item.
Jason, thank you for all the hard work you do. We certainly appreciate it, man.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Chairman and trustees, the item before you is to approve a reduction in the assumed annualized rate of return for the city pension plan from 7.40% to 7.25%. The purpose of this presentation is to review the process that generated the return projection and show how this compares to other pension plans in the state and nationally. The assumed rate of return is an output of the asset allocation analysis and is the annualized return that can be expected over the next 10 to 20 years. We work with the city's pension consultant, Segal Marco, to update our asset allocation targets approximately every four to five years. Segal reviews our current investment portfolio and runs projected performance scenarios using their current capital market projections. The objective of the process is to prudently diversify the portfolio and to maximize expected returns and minimize risks. Since 2014, the city has added three asset classes: private equity, timber, and private credit. This has improved the expected returns and lowered the risk profile of the pension plan. No new asset classes were recommended in the 2022 update, but asset class targets and investments within some of those asset classes were adjusted. City Commission Policy 236 was updated in October of 2022. The update detailed the changes to the investment allocations. Resulting assumed rate of return for the pension fund is 7.25%. The city's actuary uses this assumption to determine required pension contributions.
Next slide, please.
This slide's a graph of assumed rates of returns from other plans across the state and the nation. I know the font's a little bit small, but the City of Tallahassee is the green line and is the highest on the graph. The next line in blue is the Florida retirement system. The orange and yellow lines are the average current return assumptions for Florida and national plans. As you can see, all return assumptions have been trending down, primarily due to changing capital market projections. Lowering the expected rate of return is the conservative funding approach. That, I'm done. I'm here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no public comment on the item, so the only thing we need is recommended action, one, is to, as Jason indicated, adjust the return assumption from 7.4% to 7.25%.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. Discussion, comment, Mayor Pro Tem?
Move our option one.
Okay, the recommended option's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes 6-0. Our next item, please, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next item, 702, will be presented by Angel Charlton, our Retirement Programs Administrator.
Excellent. Angel, thank you for joining us. And thank you for all your hard work and dedication. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City of Tallahassee, Board of Trustees, Chair, and Members. As stated, my name is Angel Charlton, and I am your proud City of Tallahassee Retirement Programs Administrator. It is a privilege to speak before you today. I would like to provide a brief overview of our October 1, 2022, valuation report. This includes the reduction, 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 sorry, of the assumed rate of return going from 7.24% to 7.25% for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. As you are aware, the investment world has experienced volatility due to the most recent COVID-19 pandemic with the return of inflation in the last year. The health of our investments were not exempt. However, I am proud to state our pension plan has remained stable and healthy. This presentation will be a visible, a visual synopsis of history up to the valuation date of October 1 of 2022. Please note, we are aware this is historical data and does not guarantee our future results, but does help staff plan, facilitate, and prepare for our potential adjustments. Now, if you will, please place your attention on the monitors. This presentation encompasses the following: value of assets versus accrued liability, city pension contributions, and the status of our funded ratio. The total value of assets versus the total accrued liability shows where we were above 100% fully funded in 1996 and fell below in 2012. In recent years, interest rates almost fell to zero, which lowered our actual returns public pension plans hope to achieve. As a result, our actuaries have consistently recommended we adopt a more realistic investment rate of return assumption. The pension contribution rate by plan describes historical data of our pension contributions from 2005 to date. This is another visual, which tells the story of our pension contributions and how they have progressed over time. This is encouraging since our general and police plans have stabilized and fire has started to flatten. This is in due to the implementation of Part D provisions for all plans. Progress has been made with general and fire, and we hope to see the same results with police. By doing so, we're expecting the city pension contribution rates to trend downward. Likewise, you can see the actual percentage amounts related to the previous chart to better understand the city's pension contributions to our plan. Here, you can grasp how our actuaries have measured from fiscal year 2017 until present by plan type. We have progressively increased our funding levels over time, and industry standard has deemed 80% as being the adequate funding levels for public pension plans. This is to ensure funding levels are adequate and readily available for payments of pension benefits. Our final chart is an illustration of how we've reached over 80% in funding levels across all plans and are in alignment with the city's strategic plan of being 90% funded by 2024. Overall, our funding levels have remained stable and healthy. Lastly, I must acknowledge, in working with our actuary, it has been brought to our attention the City of Tallahassee ranked number one amongst 30 of their clients in the state of Florida for the best rate of return in FY 2022. Yes, we received negative returns. However, we were only negative 5.2 compared to some who were negative as much as 18.9%. This concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions? That was a wonderful presentation, taking very detailed, complicated information and quite honestly, put it on a level that I can understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel.
Do we have any public comment? Mr. Cook.
No, sir. No public comment. I do just want to reiterate a couple of the points that Angel made, and that is, over a long period of time, we've seen all sorts of volatility everywhere from that long history she showed, from a dot-com bubble to a great financial crisis to years with great returns. And throughout, we've remained in strong position. And this report will be the last one we receive before we evaluate our strategic plan. And as Angel's last slide, or last two slides pointed out, we're at 90% for our general employees, which was our objective. That was our target in our strategic plan, and we've achieved that. In addition, when you combine all three, general, police, and fire, which weren't specifically identified as a target, the three of those combined is, if you round up three tenths of a percent, 90% across the board. So we're very pleased with where we are.
Excellent. And what is the recommended action for the record?
Recommended action is option one, which is to accept and implement the October 1, 2022 actuarial report.
Excellent.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for the recommended action, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized for comment.
I have no comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I... Commissioner Rich... Did somebody try to get my attention for comment? Oh, okay. I apologize.
I heard it, but it wasn't me.
Any other comment for those participating electronically? Great. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 6-0. Angel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do we have anything else to come before the Pension Plan Board of Trustees?
No, sir.
Colleagues, I know you joined me as well in thanking Mr. Steve Tiefler for his service on this board with us. Steve, thank you so very much, and we appreciate you making sure that you're able to participate today. Thank you. So at this time, I am going to adjourn the Pension Plan Board of Trustees and call the City of Commission Meeting of the City of Tallahassee to order once again. We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda? Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
I don't think so, Mayor. Let me check these last couple that were handed to me. Nothing on consent. No, sir.
Move consent.
Second.
Okay, consent has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of consent, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on the introduction of ordinances. And Madam Attorney, we have a slew of them today. So let's begin with 11.01.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11.01 is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-09, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leion County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the residential preservation land use category to the urban residential category at Mary's Drive and Mahan Drive, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-09 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public... Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this one or on any of the introduction of ordinances?
Mayor, I have no speakers who have requested to speak on any of the introduction of ordinance items.
Okay. I'll still ask you just in case one or two comes in through the process.
Yes, sir.
All right. Colleagues, we have no public comment. The recommended action is just to accept the introduction of ordinance.
So move.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on 11.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 11.02 is introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-10, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land medium-density residential on the official zoning map from residential preservation 2 at Mahan Drive and Mary's Drive, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-10 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Assuming still no public comment on this item.
Correct.
All right, colleagues.
Move for option one.
Been properly moved for option number one, the introduction of ordinance by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 11.03. Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-11, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leion County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the heavy industrial land use category to the suburban land use category at 5411 Capital Circle Southwest, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-11 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any public comment?
No, sir.
Direction, colleagues.
Move for option number one.
Been properly moved for option number one as recommended by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 11.04. Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.04 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-12, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as general commercial C2 on the official zoning map from industrial at 5411 Capital Circle Southwest, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-12 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Second.
Been properly moved for the recommended action by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.05. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.05 is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-13, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from lake protection land use category to the high-intensity urban activity center land use category at 3534 Thomasville Road, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-13 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
No comments.
Colleagues.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.06. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.06 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-14, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as high-intensity urban activity center on the official zoning map from Lake Protection at 3534 Thomasville Road, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-14 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clark?
No speakers.
Okay. Colleagues, direction.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.01. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.07.
Oh, seven.
Is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-15, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from residential preservation land use category to the university transition land use category for properties within the 38.12 acre area west of Stadium Drive and north of Pensacola Street, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-15 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, any public comment?
No, sir.
Colleagues, direction.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. 11.08. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.08 is introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-16, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as university transition on the official zoning map from residential preservation one for properties within the 38.12 acre area west of Stadium Drive and north of Pensacola Street, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-16 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, any public comment on this item?
There are no speakers.
Colleagues, direction.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item 11.09 has been deleted. Item 11.10 has been deleted. Item 11.11. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.11 is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-07, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from government operational land use category to the university transition land use category at Ocala Road north of 2006 Crab Apple Drive, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-07 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clark, any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, direction.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 11.12. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.12 is introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-08, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as university transition on the official zoning map from residential preservation one at Ocala Road north of 2006 Crab Apple Drive, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-08 and set the first and only public hearing and action on March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clark, any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues.
Move acceptance of the recommended action.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney, do we have any other introduction of ordinances to come before the City Commission today?
No, we do not have any other introductions this afternoon.
Hey, you know what? Job well done, Madam Attorney. Job well done. Okay, we're going to move on then to... Commissioner Porter, you still with us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Great. We're going to move on to policy formation and direction, 12.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 12.01 seeks your approval to apply for a grant from the Bloomberg Initiative for Cycling Infrastructure. The grant would be a million-dollar grant, which would result in the installation of about two and a half miles of permanent barrier between bike lanes and vehicular traffic throughout the planned corridors and will link FSU and College Town, FAMU Cascades, Capital Cascades Trail, South Side Neighborhoods, and the downtown area. As I mentioned, it would be a million-dollar grant, and blueprint funds would be used for the remainder of the project. Eric Gooch is our manager of public infrastructure engineering. He's here to answer any questions that you have. And you can see there's a map that would... that depicts where this would occur.
Eric, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Mr. Clark, do we... Eric, I don't want you to have to stand there. Any comments? You good? Okay. Excellent. Mr. Clark, any public comment on this item?
No, sir. Not on 12.01.
Okay. Commissioner Porter, any comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Looking for direction.
Yes.
By all means, let's go for it. Absolutely.
Move acceptance of them.
All right. The Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment?
Let's go get that million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Put it in action in our community.
Sounds great. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much. Item number 12.02. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. At your last meeting, you asked staff to bring back an update on our tree protection standards. We've done that. We've got quite a bit of information that's been summarized in your agenda item that compares us to other cities around the state as well as the nation. Our growth management director, John Reddick, is here to present the information we have. We seek your acceptance of this update. What we have confirmed in general is that our tree protection standards are among the strongest and most stringent in the U.S. And that's hard to compare at times, but we find all of the different elements that go into our standards make it one of the most robust sets of rules you can find. But John has more information. He'll share a presentation.
John, thank you.
All right. Thank you, you guys, for being here, and commissioners. I'm going to start off by clarifying that. I'm going to use the term DBH a lot, and what that is is how we're measuring diameter of a tree. So it's about 54 inches off the ground. So if you hear a 36-inch tree, that's basically across at 54 inches above ground. I want to start with where we got to our current ordinance. It's a result of an adopted change in 2004, and that came after about a two-year process with the Citizens Committee to review changes for our environmental management ordinance overall. But specifically, the major updates that came for how we manage our tree preservation was categorizing trees in terms of prioritizing based on species and actually putting them into different sets to make sure that we have a set values that distinguish them. And so we have operated off of that since that time. And I'll review what we consider protected trees. And this slide sort of demonstrates that we go very based on species. Dogwoods are four inches or greater. Hardwood or longleaf pine is going to be 12 inches or greater. And then any tree on our property that's 18 inches or greater is going to be considered protected. We also have specific standards that apply to the perimeter of a site. So for example, outside of your buildable footprint, you don't have the option to just remove that tree because you feel inappropriate. Those trees have to remain protected. We also have trees that are protected based on their location. So our canopy road protection zones, trees, any tree located in a wetland, trees that have been planted previously as part of mitigation for other prior tree removal or impacts, exceptional specimens and patriarch trees as well. And I will say this also doesn't include trees that are within specific habitats that we identify as part of our natural features inventory process as a preliminary process before any sort of permitting activity occurs. So that would be your preservation and conservation features like your high-quality successional forests, your nayer forests. And so these are large swaths of land that are going to be set aside totally outside of these standards before there's any project moving forward on our property. We do have some exceptions. Our single-family properties have a little more leeway in terms of what is considered protected for homeowners. So that's 36 inches or greater. And then we get more stringent for a site that doesn't have a permit. So if there's a vacant lot and someone takes it upon themselves to remove trees, we're going to consider any tree that was two inches or greater to have been protected when we... So what we did coming out of that 2004 update is establish a credit and debit system. And this allows us to track and make sure that we are accounting for impacts to protected trees or removal of protected trees and ensuring that as before a project can move forward, there is a management plan to make up for those impacts or removals through a credit system. So again, that values based on tree species. We have four different categories of trees that we go by. And so our highest-valued trees are going to be based on their size as well the most debits incurred to impact or remove in a project. And then likewise, the most valued if they are used to mitigate. Slide here. So we have a variety of means to try and mitigate for tree debits. So that includes replanting on-site, replanting off-site, and protecting existing trees that are on-site in perpetuity. I'll say this when we look through our options that are listed within our code. The... Looking back as far as 2018, which is something we've been doing recently, is assessing how we are implementing our standard is 95% of projects are either protecting trees, existing trees on-site, or replanting. There is a fee-in-lue option that is a last resort that projects look to. It is by far not, you know, the least cost feasible as well. That is less than 2% of what we see in terms of credit. So it is very rare that there's a project that is seeking to just buy their way out of having to replant or preserve trees on-site to manage their impacts. We also have very stringent removal penalties for unpermitted removals or impacts. So our debit system for a first-time impact on a property for damaging or removing a protected tree without a permit would incur three times the debits that it would otherwise require. And again, that goes back to our... to be mitigated through either replanting or ultimately the option to pay a fee-in-lue. And so just for the example of a 36-inch live oak, if someone damages that permanently, you know, to... or removes it without the necessary approvals, then that could mean an incurred cost of $26,000. So it is a steep price to pay, and we do enforce it strongly. And to say that if you have a second defense on a property, then it goes up to five times that value for every... So looking at our protected trees and what areas we specifically protected, we have a critical protection zone. We establish that based on what the diameter of the tree is. So that is to say a 36-inch live oak is going to have a 72-foot diameter protection zone. So this typically far exceeds what your canopy drip line is going to be. So that area that the canopy actually extends to, it's going to far exceed that in most cases. Our standards require that you cannot have any development activity within that zone. So that can be everything from building placement to fence placement. And this doesn't just apply to trees that are on a subject property. If a property is proposed for development or, you know, just a simple building permit for a home addition, if a neighboring property has a protected tree that has that zone that extends onto it, onto the subject property, then it is considered protected. So we are applying this to protected trees that are both on these properties and extending onto them from neighboring properties. We do have an option that, especially in our more urbanized areas, we work with projects to utilize. And that is protecting trees that may require impacts just based on the nature of urban development and tight working spaces. If they can get a mitigation plan approved and implemented by a certified arborist, and we do that in consultation with our certified arborists with the city, then we will allow them to go forward with the project without incurring debits for that tree. And we have some recent examples of that. So 440 on North Monroe, I'm sure you've driven by before. And that is an example where they prepared a mitigation plan, and we had an arborist on-site every time they were doing work within that protection zone as well. And so... And another example is a small residential project on Stern Street. And this is when we worked the developer to move the building outside of that drip line of the tree. And again, required arborist on-site for any work that was occurring within that critical protection zone. Looking at the general grouping of trees in our urban forest, we do have a minimum standard for urban forest on new development projects. This is 10% of total site area has to be set aside. In most cases, if there is already any vegetation, mature vegetation on-site, then it is expected that that is the targeted area to be your urban forest. There are projects, if it's a redevelopment project, for example, where there may not be existing vegetation, then they are expected to establish an urban forest on that property. And those will have to have a management plan to ensure that it stays healthy for... Just show you a quick example. This is an engineer drawing of a suburban development site. So towards the right of your screen is the urban forest that was required for that project. That's a combination of existing trees and replanted. So this is what it looks like currently as well. And then we also have a site reforestation standard. And so this is to ensure that every project is contributing to expanding our urban canopy in some way. So a fully vacant site with no vegetation is still going to be expected to do at least 40 credits per acre for that project to make up for that and get us some established vegetation with that project. Most projects you'll see as part of their landscaping requirements, streetscaping, things like that will make up those credits in that way. And then one other item that is not directly related to our ordinance, but I think is very important for us to touch on is that we, as a department, have worked hard to expand access to information about this. I think, you know, it is technical in nature, just like a lot of our land development regulations. But I'll start off and say, you know, a year ago or so, we published on YouTube a video series that explains our ordinance in more layman terms. I did narrate that, for whatever that's worth. And then we... But more recently, and what we hope to have launched in the next month or so, is a very detailed dedicated webpage. This would be accessed through our growth management website. And this is a combination of explaining how this works, you know, the value that our credit debit system has provided since its inception in 2004, and also tracking our data of exactly what kind of credits and debits are occurring over time, being able to have location maps so that interested individuals can look and see specific projects, what is being removed, what's being replanted, what's being protected, and making sure that we have a clear tracking method going forward to demonstrate that what we have in place is working well. And in the future, if we need to reevaluate anything, then we have that data available as well. And so that's where we can look and say 95% of our credits are being made up through planting new trees and protecting existing trees. And that's where we can look. And we know that since 2018, we have had significantly more credits overall than debits taken citywide in development projects. And we'll also be able to build in visualizations to see how our city's urban canopy has changed over time. That'll be a helpful tool for individuals to utilize. So these are things that we think are important steps to help us be able to assess how we're doing and also be able to help the general public have an understanding of how we currently operate. We did take it upon ourselves to look at some comparable cities, both nationwide and statewide. The nationwide cities pulls from other Tree USA, Tree City USA peer cities like Tallahassee is. And then statewide, some comparable cities to Tallahassee. And that wasn't just... We looked at their ordinances and what their technical languages of how we apply this. But we also called and spoke to staff and said, you know, we see that you have this here. How effective is it? What challenges are you seeing? And the key findings that we found, which, as the city managers stated, indicate that we remain a leader among all of these peers that we have, is that the best in that group are having a structure that prioritizes tree protection based on their species, requiring mitigation plans and having a mitigation tier system that basically says replanting on-site, off-site, protecting other trees, and, you know, paying a fee-in-lue. And they all have a tree bank essentially that we have as well that fee-in-lue funding goes toward. And they all have strong penalties in place for the illegal removing or impacting any trees. And so when we looked at that and we said, okay, well, we see that we are still a leading standard in this across the country, but an opportunity that we may have in terms of our management practices is we have... our management practices is we have that tree bank as well. It is currently limited to landscaping projects, the policy in place for landscaping, how we apply those funds. And that was something we saw that I think was done well elsewhere, was expanding how those funds can be applied to help achieve our urban forest goals overall. So that was one recommendation that came out of that. But on that, available for any questions.
Excellent. John, thanks for the presentation. First of all, any questions, clarification before we get into public comment?
All right. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we have several speakers on this item. The first is Nita Davis. The first is Max Epstein. Each speaker will, as usual, have three minutes for remarks and the light should turn yellow at 30 seconds.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. Thank you very much for bringing this item before you. First of all, I'd like to start off with our requests, which are to form a citizen committee, just like in 2004, to implement what happened with the Urban Forest Master Plan. And when you hear protected trees, it just means it's protected until you get a permit to cut it down. And this is not how the county operates. The county has different definitions for patriarch and exceptional specimen trees that should be incorporated into our code. Mr. Richardson, I know that you're on the Canopy Roads Committee. That's worked for a long, oh, you're not? I thought I looked on the website, but that has worked very well for a long time. So when we're talking about the Urban Forest Master Plan, it makes a lot of different recommendations. We're talking about implementation. We actually spend a lot less than our peers. We spend about $500,000 when our peers spend up to 1.3 million. And to actually implement the Urban Forest Master Plan, we might need up to $4 million a year. Our annual benefits for our urban forest, $15 million a year, and it increases our property values by $173 million. That's how much our trees are worth to our private property. $4.3 million per year we get from our public trees. And according to the Urban Forest Master Plan, every dollar we spend on our street trees, we receive $10 in benefits. If you look at the Urban Forest Master Plan itself, it has many recommendations on how to update our code. It says, "Overall, the ordinance has been less than successful and a source of confusion. Unclear definitions seem to be resolved, insufficient resources, the credit and debit system needs to be updated, species diversity needs to be updated, new tree preservation information needs to be, and other things." It also recommends that we implement, like many places that love our trees, a separate ordinance for our street trees, like that Virginia tree that was mentioned. That took a lot of work and citizens to save that tree and incorporate it in. Well, we should have an ordinance that deals with that. You even paid the same company to do a landscape code analysis that came up with many different recommendations, and we paid for this. And it said ecosystem benefits were greatly reduced, canopy replacement, no matter how aggressive, rarely reaches the preconstruction stage, even 40 years in the future. Bigger, healthier trees need to be preserved in the site planning process, and the county codes would help with that. I've looked at 100 different, you know, developments. I use that tool. They're almost all clear-cut. And actually, our code basically recommends or forces developers to clear-cut. And we have code changes that have been recommended by this for infill development. And actually will reduce the regulatory burden on developers because they get to build up or modify setbacks or this and that. And if I could have 30 more seconds, I would appreciate that. So this would actually help us develop faster while saving all of our trees. And these are all in the Urban Forest Master Plan that has been adopted.
If you could please wrap up, that'd be great.
Sure. I'm wrapping up right now. And, you know, you talked about this tree ordinance survey. Staff just completed this. It's beautiful. It's 100 pages long. They did a great job. And there are so many things in here that we should incorporate.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nita Davis. After Nita Davis will be Randy Dinkler.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Nita Marlene Davis, 1111 East Paul Russell Road, 32301. I am asking you, all of you, to read what you paid for and go by it. Now, I have pictures of beautiful 200 to 300-year-old oaks set to a bonfire, a flarestone on the English forest. They have completely clear-cut it. Of course, they were burning all these oaks and piling all the pine to be hauled off to the mill. And then, like we always do, we've seen this, they do this, they burn it, they burn all the hardwood, and then they take down all the trees along the road because they really don't want anyone to see what they're doing. How can you mitigate a 300-year-old tree? I mean, I'm asking any of you, how can you do that? What, plant a crape myrtle? This isn't working. We call ourself the city of trees. We are not, I mean, we, really, we need to change the name. We're comparing ourself to Miami. Their tree ordinance? I mean, come on, guys. Really? Are they mitigating with palm trees? I'm not sure. I mean, I am so upset with this city. We were so proud to be the city of trees, and we are implementing something that cannot be reversed. We are clear-cutting. And all of these trees, all these beautiful oak trees that you don't even see, none of you see, I mean, I've had to go in and trespass and take pictures of them on the ground and being hauled off to a fire higher than this room. So I don't know, guys. I mean, what are we doing here? I'm just asking you, please, take a look at this plan. Don't just listen to staff. I've got nothing against staff, but this plan needs to be read, covered to cover by all of you, and we need to go by, and we need a citizens council. This was put in that plan, and we have not implemented it. And we can't use COVET as an excuse anymore. So I'm asking you, number one, to implement a city, you know, a commission, you know, a tree commission. And number two, go by the plan that you paid for because we're clear-cutting, and you can't mitigate a 300-year-old tree. That's criminal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk.
Next is Randy Dinkler, and then Midori Okasako.
Your name and address for the record, please. Thank you for joining us.
Randy Dinkler, 552 East Georgia. The staff's recommendation is to do nothing to strengthen our current tree ordinance. And the staff reached this conclusion by reviewing and comparing other cities' tree ordinances to ours. And staff concluded that some cities are doing better, but many are much worse than ours. Is our goal to compare ourselves to other cities that might be very different from ours? Or is our goal to pursue excellence? I think the way that you can assess the success of our ordinance is to look at the results. How are our trees and our canopy doing under this ordinance? Well, the city's own statistics show that we're not doing a very good job of protecting our trees. In 1983, we had 61% canopy cover. By 2015, we had 55% canopy, a loss of 6%. And 2015 was the last canopy survey done, and I suspect we've lost a lot in the last eight years. So a successful tree ordinance, in my opinion, would not only be maintaining our urban canopy, it would be increasing it. And I think that before we decide that our current ordinance is enough, as is, shouldn't we at least do another canopy survey and find out if we're still losing canopy under this ordinance? The city has committed to carbon neutrality, and we all know one of the most cost-effective ways to decarbonize is saving trees and aggressively planting new ones. But we have an ordinance that still allows clear-cutting. We have an ordinance that does not actually protect any tree in the city, even though the ordinance has a list of protected trees. But this list is a mirage because a developer can take down any tree in the city if he pays into a fund or plants some new trees. And mind you, the new trees don't even have to be planted on the same site, and in a few years, the developer can take down the replacement trees. It's well-known that trees add value to real estate, they lower utility bills, they clean the air, they prevent erosion, they create beauty. There are even studies showing that they reduce crime. But guess what? In Tallahassee's poorer neighborhoods, there is far less tree cover than in affluent neighborhoods. And in the economically advantaged neighborhoods, trees are providing $8,000 per acre in benefits to the residents. Contrast this with $2,000 in benefits per acre in disadvantaged neighborhoods. These are the city's own figures. A good tree ordinance would result in a better distribution of benefits to all. I went through our current tree ordinance line by line, and I identified a number of areas where it is not working well and where it needs to be shored up. And I sent you all an email last week with my suggestions. I won't have time to go through all those recommendations today, but I ask you to direct staff to go back to the drawing board and strengthen the tree ordinance along the lines that I have outlined, and also along the lines of the tree survey that's been talked about by the other speakers. Tallahassee, in of all persuasions, seems to love our trees, and this is probably one of the most bipartisan issues we have.
Thank you. Ms. Decker, if you could wrap up your comments.
Okay. What I wanted to say is Tallahassee is not like other cities. We have a year-round growing season, we have abundant rainfall, we're in a biodiversity hotspot in North America, one of only a handful, and we should be protecting our trees to the highest possible degree. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Midori Okasako.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
My name is Midori Okasako, and I reside in 2776 Red Maple Ridge in Blairstone Forest. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here almost like impromptu because I wasn't quite prepared and I wasn't sure what I should say. But what I would like to mention on this particular agenda is, is that here in this document that was right next to our agenda item, it starts out by saying that Tallahassee, designated as a Tree City USA for 30 years in a row, is known for its abundance of trees and iconic canopy roads. At 55%, the city boosts, boasts, I'm sorry, the city boasts one of the highest percentages of tree coverage in the nation. Now, I believe that this might have been true at the turn of the century, but once we had advanced to 21st century, it seems like all of a sudden, a lot of the hundreds of acres of forest lands have been totally destroyed, and they are all built up in high-density housing. And it does not have to be that way. And I can test, I can be a good testament of living in a forested environment. Our Blairstone Forest, which has been around for already over 40 years now, is very forested, and there's no reason why we need to continue clear-cutting all the land on a development. So that's all I want to say. And I certainly hope that, since you spent all the money, possibly our taxpayers' money to have this document made, I hope that you, as well as the staff of the city of Tallahassee, including the county staff, will review this very closely because I will definitely be reading this. So thank you very much for this time, and I certainly hope that you will make time to review this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk.
Stephen Martin is connected via WebEx. We've heard our last speaker on this item in chambers, and Mr. Martin is our only virtual connection.
Mr. Martin, your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
All right. You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. The actions what we see speak louder than the words that we hear. You often say Tallahassee has a higher canopy coverage than other like-sized cities. I think I've heard you say higher than any other. Well, Tallahassee's independence stands on its own two feet, thinks and speaks for itself. Why then do we have to look at other cities' tree ordinances to come up with one of our own? As cities that have less canopy coverage, let Tallahassee's citizens be the voice for our tree ordinance, and not just the citizens who are picked by the city or the staff who have ties with the city and the staff, but open it up to all interested and concerned citizens. Let them gather with the staff present. And then if a citizens committee is to be formed, let it be chosen by the citizens, not the staff, as has been the practice in the past. When you end up with citizens who don't represent the voice of the rest of us, especially the most concerned citizens. So if there is a citizen committee this time, I do hope the citizens can choose their own voices. Make this a true grassroots, even call it a tree roots, citizen committee. Why not let all of the citizens, as I said, submit their names and gather with the staff, and then the citizens choose the committee? Personally, I'm quite familiar with the prior citizens committees, including the Canopy Roads citizens committees, none of which came close to having a voice, for me anyway. I hope if there is a citizens committee, it doesn't follow suit, I'm talking about for this tree ordinance. You'd think that a Tallahassee tree ordinance citizens committee would include at least one so-called tree hugger. I have yet to see any so-called tree hugger on any committee for this city, or this county for that matter. I hate to say it, but I'm predicting the same. If there is a citizens committee this time, and it is put together by the city, not the citizens, earlier, and I disagree with this assessment, the county's tree ordinance was brought up.
You have 30 seconds.
Well, county, county often uses the city's tree ordinance as a crutch, and the fact that that's the case tells you how woefully inadequate this city's ordinance is. For many years, I've been following the city and the county, and to be honest, I'm sad to say, I'm not expecting much this time around from this tree ordinance. I hope this time you can prove me wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker on this item.
Okay. Let's open it up for discussion and comment. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, first of all, say thank you to the staff. It was I who asked for this update. Thank you for this update. I found it to be very comprehensive and over and beyond what I expected. I think when I first came to the commission, we said that we were, we were like 55% coverage, and it sounds like we are maintaining that. And I've said to people who I've spoken to that I think we're doing a good job in replacing in the event that something has to be removed. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had very severe storms come through because when that happens, we all find ourselves on the other side of the spectrum because, you know, we're mad about the trees that are knocking down our lines and what have you, knocking out power. So I just want to thank you for bringing a very comprehensive review, overview to update us, and I'm satisfied with the request that I made at the last meeting with what you brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think just this year, we saw, I think, some of the hottest days on record, just in February. It's getting increasingly warm, and I think our tree canopy is important to protect, to be a resilient city as we see these temperature changes. I mean, I think the question that people are asking is, can we do better than we are doing today? And I think if we read our Urban Forest Master Plan, there are suggestions that say, yes, we can. If we want to go further to protect the trees, especially some of the larger trees or the more special trees, I do think, you know, a lot of the times, we point to our ordinance and say, you know, well, we have protected trees in Tallahassee, and people take that at face value. For me personally, if you told me I'm protected unless somebody had enough money to get rid of me, that doesn't make me feel very safe. That doesn't make me feel very protected. I'm not sure if that definition is really appropriate of the tools we have in place to try to encourage, you know, developers to make the right decisions, to try to, you know, make it easier for them to protect a tree or to replant trees. I'm not sure we have it in place where it's easier to protect the tree right now. And it's not just developers, it's the public as well. We look at... We look at the Boynton Still neighborhood, very large oak tree, Mr. Benton's oak that went through, Bama U.A. That tree was not protected. You know, that tree was removed based on public decisions, based on city and county decisions and blueprint decisions. We look at the oak grove that was at Cascades Park where there was redevelopment. You know, it would be hard to say that those trees were protected. I think, I think a good example would be, and it was in the presentation, 440 North, that tree was protected. And I appreciate the staff work to see that through, because, you know, we saw initial pushback that that tree's coming down right away, and I think the staff did do the best job that they could in that situation. So, I mean, I think the question before us is, throughout Tallahassee's history, we've always had plans on shelves, you know, good ideas on shelves, improvements in plans that a lot of hard work went into, and a lot of them never get implemented. The recommendations, the hard work of staff, never gets implemented. And that's exactly where the Urban Forest Master Plan is today. It's an unfunded plan that, and a lot of it, as the speaker said, would cost, you know, a significant amount of money. But there's also things in the plan that could be implemented now that I think could go a long way. So, I do think we should look at how we can be better. I want to look at the list of comparable cities and be at the top of the list. I want them to look to Tallahassee and say, this is what Tallahassee has done to protect their environment, increase property values for the people that live there, and improve the overall quality of life. So, I do agree. I'm not ready to make suggestions off the cuff, but I do think a group convening to bring back recommendations of how we can do a little bit better next year than we did this previous year. So, I will make, I will move that we convene a citizens committee to look at recommendations in the Urban Forest Master Plan, as well as their own recommendations, and bring them back to the city commission for discussion.
Second.
Motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Mr. Richardson for comment?
On the motion, or?
In general, on the motion, on the item?
I don't have any discussion on the motion on the item, I certainly don't. But I think the motion is on the table, and it's consecutive. Carry that.
No, I mean, it's all related to the item on the table.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would say that, you know, we all live in this community. I've lived in Tallahassee for 50 years of my life, all of my adult life, and I care about this community as deeply as anyone in this room, anyone listening, anyone who lives in this community. I deeply care about the city of Tallahassee and what we have, the amenities that we have, our trees. We have fought to protect the trees in the city of Tallahassee. And I would say that a tree is not going to mitigate climate change or the temperature. You know, that trees themselves will not mitigate that change in temperature. That's going to happen unless there are lots of other things that we do, and we have committed ourselves to doing that through our, the resolution that we passed, making this city carbon neutral by 2050. Those are the kinds of things that are going to mitigate climate change and temperature change in the city. So, I want to make the point, even when my wife and I were looking at doing solar at our home, and we talked to a technician, and they came out, took a look at our house, and the guy told me that we've got two trees that are right next to our house. One is a pine, one is an oak. He said, Mr. Richardson, if we're going to put solar on your house, you're going to have to cut down the oak tree. And do you know what I told him? We're not interested in solar, because that's why I wanted to protect that tree on my property. And so, I want to make it clear that all of us have that interest. There is no one group or one individual in this community that cares more about our environment, our trees, than what we do here on this commission. I think staff has done an excellent job bringing back what they were asked to do. I've been on the commission almost eight years now, and I can tell you, we've had these kind of conversations just about every year because of the concern that we have for our environment and for our trees. But y'all, we've got to grow as well. And I'm not saying we just give developers the free-for-all to rape and pillage our land. We don't do that in Tallahassee. But we also have to grow as well. And in some of those instances, trees will have to be taken down. Look at the trees that have had to be taken down for the widening of Capital Circle Southwest. I've looked at the development or watched the development that's going up on Blairstone Road, and those trees that have come down for that development because we say we want more affordable housing. But we can't say that those two goals are at odds with each other. I don't think they are. So, we have tough decisions to make based on what we think is in the best interest of our community, based on what we hear, at least based on what I hear, from citizens throughout this community. Citizens in my neighborhood, where we've got lots of trees, we care about those trees. I'm glad to hear that they have some property value. But I think staff has done a great job. They care, our staff cares about this community as much as any of us, and I think have done a good job of carrying out what we have tasked them to do, and I'm prepared to support the recommendation of staff on this item today, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a substitute motion?
If it needs to be a substitute motion, I will make that a substitute motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Richardson has made a substitute motion for staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by the mayor, Pro Tim. Still on discussion. Commissioner Porter?
Mr. Thank you.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Grade material in the item. I think that it goes without saying, just as others have mentioned, that our trees are dear to us in Tallahassee, that we hear about it a lot, and as Commissioner Richardson mentioned, it comes up. I'm sure it's come up for years. And not only are they dear to us, but the health implications, the environmental implications, the cost-saving benefits. And, you know, you're correct that trees alone will not stop global warming, but they do provide between 20 and 45 degrees of coolness. I mean, the difference between an area that is shaded and is not, it can be a difference of 20 to 45 degrees. This is one of those issues that I think is worth, in my opinion, further discussion and input because of how important it is to this community and because we haven't really revisited this in, with the citizen committee, and I'm not sure really if at all, and I'll ask questions about that in a moment, for almost 20 years. You know, 2004, almost 20 years ago. So, I have a couple of questions for staff, if I may.
Mr. Reddick, you'll join us, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Okay, so, on the comparison chart, could you just very briefly give me an overview? There were a few things that I didn't quite know what they meant. So, the no attachments on trees.
That is a, was a unique standard that essentially said you can't hang any banners or anything like that on trees, or decorations, or anything of that.
Okay. Okay. And preserve in natural state.
And that just the same means that it can't be impacted, just similar to how our prohibitions from going within the canopy protection zone would be applied?
Okay. And for the policies that we have currently, do those policies apply only to private development or also to public development?
These include public projects.
Okay, okay. And for the nationwide survey, I didn't see Tallahassee. Did I miss something? I didn't see Tallahassee included in that survey to know, to compare directly what, where there was overlap with the nationwide survey.
No, and you're correct. That was not, when that was done, the intent wasn't to do a comparison for us. It was more of an internal assessment, knowing what we had in place. And then when we followed up to do a Florida survey, that was where we put ourselves in there as well for comparison. So, not intentional necessarily to exclude us, just a matter of where we were at when we were doing those surveys.
Okay, and that makes sense. I would love to see where Tallahassee fits in on that because there were some significant differences, it seemed, between that and Florida. It was a little bit more expansive. So, I would be interested in seeing that. Have we taken any policy action since we received the recommendations made in the Urban Forest Master Plan in 2018?
No, we have not.
Okay. Okay. So, the comments I have now are, in reviewing some of the language, I mean, some of the recommendations in the Urban Forest Master Plan, I mean, I'm going to read word for word some of what it says. It says, so, the, basically, what we're already doing is longstanding and extensive. But it says that overall, the ordinance that we currently have has not been successful and has been a source of confusion because of a variety of issues that were revealed during this plan's development. And they go on to list several, you know, several elements that, where they make recommendations about how we can be a little bit more specific, not only for the public but for developers. And so, they make a couple really specific recommendations. Is, are those, I mean, where are we, kind of where are we at with that? Is there a reason that we haven't, as far as I know, you know, made any, adopted any of those recommendations?
Commissioner, I could speak to that specifically, being a component of, associated with the conference plan. But we essentially only took it upon ourselves as part of this update requested to include the work we had done to see where we are at currently. So, it was not intended to be related to the Urban Forest Master Plan necessarily, but just an assessment of how we're comparing with other leading cities. So, I don't have any comments on specifically why or we haven't taken action from that.
Okay. I know we have a motion on the table. I would like, if possible, if once we vote on that motion, if I could be recognized for some follow-up, because there's some things I'd like to suggest or recommend.
Okay, so at the-
And that's it for now.
Okay. The mayor is walking back in. I'm gonna-
Oh, okay.
We'll just hold for him.
Any further discussion? There's a substitute motion on the table for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Curtis Richardson, seconded by the mayor, Pro Tim. All those in favor of the substitute motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nah.
And, Mr. Porter, how would you like to be recorded on that vote?
I support accepting the report.
Okay.
So, but I do have, I'd like to make a motion on this item as well.
Yes, ma'am. I'll come right back to you. The motion passes for the one, with Commissioner Matt Lou in dissent. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the comments that Mr. Reddick just made, well, first let me say that I would like to see a citizen group. Obviously, I seconded that motion. I would support it. I hope that maybe moving forward, we'll consider that. But I did want to make a motion, given Mr. Reddick's comments, that we have a similar item come to us with a little bit of a deeper dive into the Urban Forest Master Plan, since this item didn't really address that. I would love to see an update on that. I think, other than Commissioner Richardson, you know, that, I guess, came before, came back to the city in 2018, or, so I'm not sure if any of us, other than Commissioner Richardson, have had that come back anytime recently. So, I would like to make a motion that we have an informational item come back to us on the Urban Forest Master Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the table by Commissioner Porter to bring back an informational item on the Urban Forest Master Plan, signed by Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Porter. I'd like to add to that, if we, as part of that item, could get detailed information of what recommendations from the Urban Forest Master Plan have been implemented so far, and a staff timeline and recommendations on what has not been implemented so far moving forward.
That works with me. That works for me.
As amended. Any other comment? Well, I'm fine with an informational item. For clarification, we did vote on the Urban Forest Master Plan 2018. It was one of the first votes that we took, actually, as a commission. Commissioner Porter was not part of the commission at the time, so, only appropriate, bring back an informational item. That is fine, as amended. Any other comment? None. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Matlow, as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay. Mr. Reddick, thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it, John.
Great job.
We're on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to award contracts for consulting real estate brokerage services, and that would be for right-of-way acquisitions and other property acquisitions. The list of contractors would be Caldwell Banker Hartung, KW Commercial, like Keller Williams, Town and Country Realty, the Nama Group, and TLG Real Estate Services. This would be in addition to those that are already under contract, and it would be for a three-year term with options for two one-year extensions. Robert Culver-House is our director of real estate. He's here to answer any questions you might have.
Robert, thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Let's go. Do we have any citizen comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
We do not. No speakers.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for staff recommendation. There's no fiscal impact, so, it's just-
Been properly moved, staff recommendation by the mayor, Pro Tim. Is there a second to the motion?
I'd second it, but have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You have the floor, sir.
Just a quick question on what our minority and women participation is in this. I know we have firms in town that are women and minority-owned. Are they participating in this as well?
As part of the, this particular bid, we're not actually, we're just placing the vendors under contract. We're not actually engaging them for a specific project. At the time we engage them for a specific project, we will address the MWSBE qualifications.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table, excuse me. Commissioner Porter, any comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor of the motion on the table made for staff recommendation by the mayor, Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the renovations at the Tallahassee Airport for concourses A and B. We're seeking your approval to award approximately $1.5 million to Cook Brothers Incorporated for the terminal rehabilitation Phase III project. David Pollard, our airport director, he's here with us tonight to answer any questions you have on this.
Mr. Pollard, appreciate all the great work. David, you're doing out at the airport. Do we have any public comment on, oh, do you have a presentation?
I can run through it very quickly if you'd like, Mayor.
Sure, that'd be great, if you wouldn't mind.
Certainly. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, appointed officials. As you know, we've embarked on this upgrade to our terminal building. Previously, Phase I in the ticketing areas and the baggage claim, and then Phase II was our security checkpoint area. So, what this project does is completes the airside portion of the terminal, that area beyond the security checkpoint. As you may recall, our strategic priorities and goals- As you may recall, our strategic priorities and goals, we're working to surpass the 1 million total passengers. So, as we continue to grow and as that traffic continues to grow, I'd like you to consider the pressures that we will certainly feel with respect to capacity. We have to keep up with safety, security, and capacity out at the airport and continually be doing our planning efforts there. So, you heard the great news on JetBlue, I know, at the last meeting, and certainly we're very, very excited about that. This project here moves forward with improvements to our flooring, new carpet in the gate areas, passenger seating, electrical outlets, new service animal relief area required by federal requirements now, improvements to our HVAC systems out there, paint and finishes, LED lighting, and ceiling replacement, to name a few. So, this has been a very ambitious project. Once we opened up the ceiling of the terminal, as you can imagine, over 30 years old, we found a lot that we were not anticipating. So, this is what we're working towards. You've probably seen, I'm not real happy with the current condition of our carpet out there and flooring, so we're looking to improve that flooring, put the terrazzo in the heaviest footpaths that the travelers often use, new carpet in the gate areas, power up the seats that we bought a while back, we just haven't had the power there. But this is what we bump into, so as we tear it up and do the demolition, we certainly got into a lot with respect to the things that are happening up above the ceiling, and also take a fresh look at air handlers and ductwork and things of that nature. So, once we got into that, we made a determination that we did need to replace some of that ductwork, new, as I mentioned, the terrazzo and the flooring and things of that nature. And so, just a lot of unforeseen conditions. Working with our food and beverage concessionaire and also the Dunkin' brand to bring this Dunkin' to fruition here at the airport, those are some of the things that we're working on, and water filtration, all the requirements that come with this, you know, we've certainly got a lot of comments in water bottle fillers and things of that nature out there. So, we're doing a lot. We're focusing on the customer. We're also adding new Wi-Fi out there as well, at the latest and greatest speeds, new network switches, cabling, and things of that nature. So, a strong focus on the customer and the quality of the services that we provide, that's what we're looking to do, and I certainly appreciate your support on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Sir.
Move for staff recommendation.
Second.
The Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved staff recommendation. It is seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matt Lew for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Pollard. Great work, you know, the constant improvements, I think, are very much appreciated. I know we've addressed it before, and I just wanted to, for our constituents who ask, sometimes you fly in the afternoon and it's really easy to get through TSA. You might show up at a flight first thing in the morning and be a lot longer line. Could you just give us the recommended arrival time for passengers on flights, as well as our role in getting people through TSA expediently?
Thank you, Commissioner, and great question, and I was just talking about this yesterday, as a matter of fact. The official position is, please arrive for your flight at least two hours prior to your scheduled departure time. That's what we're recommending. Keep in mind that airlines have specific cutoff times, so with your baggage and things of that nature, if you're checking baggage, their system will cut off 45 minutes prior to that scheduled departure. So, it's very, very important. Now, for the more astute business traveler and some of that, certainly recognize, they may not have checked baggage and they are going to go straight to the checkpoint with their mobile device, and they're using the app and things of that nature. That's what we're trying to deliver. We're trying to deliver that seamless customer experience as they move forward. So, like I say, the official position is at least two hours. Might the more astute business traveler that isn't traveling and having to check bags be able to arrive a little bit sooner than that, or earlier, not so early? Yes. And so, I might also mention that we're working very closely with the TSA on, you know, we installed the new security screening equipment up in the security checkpoint area. We're also working on securing new equipment down to screen the bags down below and also to really expedite that traveler experience. But what's happening is that compression, when you consider that Delta Airlines, American Airlines, and the others are trying to get several flights out all at once, and that's what you see in that first morning push. And so, we say especially during those early morning flights, that's when it's most critical, you get there in plenty of time.
And is JetBlue going to be at the same time?
JetBlue will be a morning departure, not that earliest morning push. That's typically been a problem for us.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Porter, any comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the table for staff recommendation made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. We're on item number 12.05. Mr. Mayor.
This item seeks your acceptance of the fiscal year '23 budget for the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan. I believe this is the second year of the funding of the plan. John Baker and his team, Ashley Edwards, are Director of Parks and Recreation. They've been heavily involved with the neighborhood, getting feedback. There is a proposed budget in your agenda item, it is lengthy, and I would like to ask John Baker to come forward and provide us an overview of the recommendation and the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, I'm here today to present the Griffin Heights Second Year Funding Plan. Before I do so, I'd like to acknowledge that there are several residents from the Griffin Heights community that are here with us, and I appreciate their work in this effort. Griffin Heights is one of three communities that have gone through the city's Neighborhood Public Safety Initiative and therefore the Neighborhood First Planning effort. Unlike the other two communities, which are Frenchtown and Griffin Heights, and Greater Bond, Griffin Heights is funded by the city. Last year, you adopted the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan, and you funded that to the tune of $2.25 million. In that approval, you specifically approved several projects, rehab of homes in Griffin Heights. We have two programs there because the funding for housing rehab came from two different sources. Some of the funding were CDBG and some were City Dollars. Also, the raising of a Family and Children Resource Center, 1309 Alabama Street. As you might recall, the IA Board had acquired that property and transferred ownership to the city, and through the adoption of the plan, you allocated $450,000 for continued work on that effort. New construction of homes in the community, $700,000 was allocated, and standing of a micro enterprise program, $425,000. All of these programs are at some various stage of being worked on, others more than, you know, some, but we're in the process of all working on these programs. In your current year budget, you provided further $2 million to continue the work there in Griffin Heights, and so, therefore, we had to work with the community to determine how that funding should be spent. As you might know, that Neighborhood First is a very much community-driven process, where the community is involved in helping us to decide how funding is spent. This is something that we have done in Greater Bond, as well as in Frenchtown, you know, deciding how the dollars should be spent. So, staff undertake a very, what I'd say, extensive process or very involved in process with Griffin Heights to develop a spending plan for the $2 million that was allocated for this year. I'd like to say, unfortunately, we didn't get to a place of consensus with the community, and so, as staff, what we have done is that we have taken the input that we receive from the broader community, from the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, and from the Griffin Heights CAT Team Leads. What we have done is that we have looked at their desire for where the funding should be spent, and we have made our best judgment as to where the funding should go for this year. So, that's what we have to present to you tonight. So, I'll just take just a little bit of time to walk through the budget that you have in front of you. So, for the 1309 Alabama Street, the last information we received from the community, which came out of a meeting that was held on the 28th of March, I'm sorry, 28th of February, $0 was allocated for that project. As staff, we are proposing that $555,000 be allocated to that project. And our reason for that is, the blueprint had gone ahead, you know, many of you participated in that decision to acquire it. The store is the community's number-one priority need, and so, that's, if you remember, we brought that to you before the IA Board, before the plan was even adopted and funding was secured for that. In working on that project, we have consulted with ALW, and ALW has provided an evaluation of the building. The $555,000 that you see in the budget is the amount of funding that we would need to complete one of the option presented in that report, which is actually new construction, tearing down the building and building new. For housing rehab, the budget that we got from the community on the 28th had $487,000, and I must note here that housing is the number-one issue that came out of this community. Many folks have stopped me, when are we going to get more funding? We are recommending $600,000, which ups that in terms of what we got on the 28th, Community Engagement Fund, we're right there with what was recommended. This fund would provide funding opportunities for the community fund, various things that are not specifically mentioned here. Economic Development and Resident Empowerment, we are in sync with what the community has recommended. This would provide for additional down payment for individuals who want to buy a home in the Griffin Heights community. Micro Enterprise Program, Griffin Heights already has $425,000 from working with the community and even their plan. They want to focus on youth entrepreneurs, so we are recommending $50,000 to add to their $425,000, and that would focus on young people who want to start a business. Crime and neighborhood safety, of course, NPSI, the crux of NPSI is neighborhood safety. We are recommending $35,000, which ups what we got on the 28th, $10,000, and this would help to fund a variety of safety improvements for the community. Miracle Hill Nursing Home, a staple in the community, perhaps one of the largest employer in the community, have approached both the Neighborhood Association, the CAT Team Leads, and the city in terms of help to stabilize their effort. We're all in agreement that through this process, we would ask you to provide some funding of $125,000 to the Miracle Hill Nursing Home. And I think that's our budget. I'm sorry. Do I have another page? The Griffin Heights Capacity Building, this is providing some funding for the Neighborhood Association to build capacity. We are recommending $25,000. New construction, this go-around, we are recommending zero for that, and you may ask why. As you saw when I presented what was funded last year, Griffin Heights had over $700,000 currently available for new construction. We believe we can get that up and out in the street in the next two months and would hold the community for, you know, the rest of the year going into the next funding cycle. Childcare assistance, we are not recommending any funding for that. We have scoured through the plan, there isn't anything specifically in the plan about providing childcare assistance, while there's something in the plan which talks about, you know, encouraging people to develop home daycare, there's nothing there which really speaks to that type of assistance. The Griffin Heights Children and Family Resource Center, again, for this year, we're not recommending any funding. They were funded in the last cycle. We, not too long ago, executed the contract with them, so we're deeming that funding as current-year funding, and that brings us to $2 million. We would have hoped that, working with all the parties, we would have had a budget that, you know, Neighborhood Association, the CAT Team Leads, and the broader community would be in sync. Unfortunately, I can't say that. So, staff has taken its best stab at what we have heard from the community, going back to the first efforts we had in the community where we hosted a balance, that checkbook exercise, and we asked everyone who came, how would you like to see the $2 million spent? So, that was a big factor in our recommendation for this budget. I stop here, and I'm available for any questions.
Question, make sure I understand this correctly. The Griffin Heights Neighborhood Funding Plan, source of that is the Neighborhood Association or the CAT Team?
They, say that again, Mr. Mayor.
Your first column, Griffin Heights Neighborhood Funding Plan, 2/28/2023. What is the origin of that, those numbers?
Okay. That's from a meeting that was held within the community on February 28th. We had had meetings with them, and that asks for another opportunity for them to take a go at it and bring a consolidated consensus budget, so that's, those numbers came from that meeting.
Where is the CAT Team?
The information we have from the CAT Team aren't, isn't up here, but back in December, we facilitated that balance the checkbook exercise, which is the broader community, a CAT Team Leads, and we asked people to show us how they would like that funding to be spent. That was factored in staff recommendation here. There are CAT Team Leads here today, but they, Griffin Heights Community Action Team is the broader community.
Any other questions of clarification?
Yeah, just one quick question. John, will there be criteria for the neighborhood engagement funding, and can you give us an idea of what being referred to there?
All right. Yeah, so, we envisioned a similar process. When we first adopted the Greater Bond Neighborhood Plan, we had a Community Engagement Fund, you know, just around the same amount of funding here, and the way that operated was that CAT Team Leads would submit a plan in terms of, hey, we would like to do this within the community. That plan would get submitted to Neighborhood Affairs. We would review, would make a recommendation to our director, and she would either approve, and then we work back with that CAT Team Lead to get whatever it is that they're proposing to be implemented. So, we envision a similar process where the neighborhood would propose some type of event or some type of project, get it reviewed by staff, get it approved, and the funding would be released for that event.
Okay. Would you have an amount for each, or would it just be based on what they requested?
It would be based on what they requested.
Okay, all right.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have about a half dozen speakers on this item. The first is Ted Houston, and the following speaker would then be Stanley Sims.
Mr. Houston, thanks for joining us. You name an address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, committee members. My name is Theodore Houston. I live at 2404 Mexi Avenue in Tallahassee. I'm a resident here since 1943. I'm very interested party in both Frenchtown and the Griffin Neighborhood Association. And I'm in a dilemma with the Griffin Neighborhood Association. My dilemma is, the CAT Team, the function of it- My dilemma is, the CAT Team, the function of it, where does it stand in the Griffin Heights Community Center Association? Because I thought the CAT Team was a liaison between the city and the Griffin Neighborhood Association, but it seems as if the CAT Team is an autonomous group, that they make their own decisions and the city collaborates them. And so I'm at, I'm at my wit's end because I don't see the improvement that Mr. Baker is talking about. Okay, and, and my whole project is, if the community saw some improvement, we would have more interactions. And we don't have that because there has been nothing seen. They bought the Bennett Store, they won't even put a sign up there saying it belongs to the community because it, he says it belongs to the city. So, so how can we progress if we're retrogressing in leadership? And I'm finished.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Stanley Sims, and then Rodney Lander.
Stanley Sims, thirteen twenty Avondale Way. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to say, uh, to John Ashley, I give this a B plus. Um, it's a good plan, and I think what leads to a lot of your frustration is, it's in progress with the CAT Team, and it's not in progress with the community on the ground. As of yet, we don't know when we gonna see some micro loans. The CAT Team does, but we don't. But I don't want to get on that because there's some more other good things in this, and I want to highlight this because I'm sweetening John up for some other things next year. I'm excited that Miracle Hill is in this. I wish we could have got two fifty, but I'll take the one fifty. That is what this for. I also spoke to John, uh, uh, that is another issue, Ashley, beautification. Those sidewalks are backup nasty like I brought them down before with the things that are done. We have that extra money there, we, Frenchtown should look better. That makes people think that we are actually doing some things that work. Um, my, my other issue is, people like to be heard and treated with respect. There's some great things that's going on, John, you're doing some great things. But sometimes it's the delivery. Example, no bid land, the CAT Team approved that. These are the kind of things that, when you say that we are involved and we are important, this is your money, this is, but when the community doesn't agree with the CAT Team, the CAT Team wins, and we can't list these people. Can community people be on the CAT Team? This is great. The CRA is, is much needed. I love the direction Mayor is going into. I'm excited, I ain't even have to cry about the Miracle Hill thing, that's, that's, it's awesome, it's, it's not all bad. But don't get angry with us when we pick out places that we can better improve. It's not that we're saying throw the whole program away, but we're saying that these areas, like I believe, housing, housing, we got people sleeping on those sidewalks in those areas. I'm gonna be very gracious today because I want to talk about the cops, I'm gone.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, can, uh, point of clarification, just so our public is not confused, this is not CRA. This is not the CRA District, this is Griffin Heights Neighborhood, a different part of funding, it is not the CRA. I just want to make sure the public is clear on that.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Rodney Lander, followed by Chris Burney.
Thanks so much for joining us, name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Rodney Lander, six seven four West Fourth Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and might take a little bit longer than three minutes to discuss two million dollars and the lives of seven thousand people. To begin with, I appreciate what the Commission has done, they took notice of the problem over there and back in twenty twenty-one, they acted on it by providing funding for us immediately, and they left it up to us to make the moves. They didn't make any requirements with the money, say go ahead and do what you need to do and report back to us. At this point in time, we are reporting back. The store at thirteen oh nine Alabama Street has taken a long process, but we are at the point now that we are ready, I believe, to, uh, move forward and give you a report with regard to that particular issue. The other items that are listed in the budget, and John reported that the, the city staff had to take, uh, the initiative to put the two ideas together of the, uh, two groups, the CAT Team as well as the CAT Team Lead. I would say to you that when we had the checkbook initiative, the city's staff introduced their view of not only the projects, but the monies available, or should be made available, to fund those projects. When you put city staff recommendations in front of and not included with, uh, the CAT Team and the CAT Team Lead, it skews the numbers, because they're making recommendations without taking into consideration those two numbers first, and then adding to it recommendations that we certainly want to hear. So, the bottom line to it all is, a lot of this has been staff-driven. And I would say to you, the few moments ago, when John mentioned the Community Engagement Fund, he indicated to you that he would be, the staff would be recommending to us, uh, projects that, 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 that could be used for CEF funds, and I would recommend to you that community engagement is for just that, community engagement, to use people who work and live in the community to engage the further, bigger community, to do things that would, would, uh, make their community better. The final thing that I would offer to you is that while affordable housing is important, it's very important, the painting of houses, some of the money from CRA is used for the outside of houses, none, none of that money can be used for the inside of houses, what does a person do with a painted up house and a toilet falling in? So, the second thing is, I would say to you that while affordable housing is important, the economic development of, of that neighborhood is most important in order to give those people an opportunity who live there to come up and not have to come to this commission to ask for monies therefore. So, I would say to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, when this initiative was first formed, uh, you said to me that, uh, in this meeting, in this hall, that where legal and where possible, much of the money be given to minorities where, where possible, you turned to the city manager over there and said that to him, he in turn turned to Ms. Barber and said, get it done. I hope that invitation is still open to come back and discuss this matter further if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Chris Burney. Then we will hear from Donald Glasper.
Reverend, good to see you, sir.
Good to see all of you.
You name the dress, please.
All right, Reverend Chris Burney, representing thirteen twenty-nine Alabama Street, Miracle Hill Nursing Home and Rehabilitation Center. I, I stand to say that Miracle Hill is a staple in that community. We are employing over a hundred people. We have now, today, seventy-four residents. And it's important in that community that we stabilize Miracle Hill, because Miracle Hill represents some residents in that community that cannot speak for themselves. And so I want to thank those, um, individuals and the different community, um, representatives that has, um, included Miracle Hill inside of this initiative, and I'm asking for your support for Miracle Hill, thank you so very much. And I'm the president of Miracle Hill Nursing Home and the State Convention, thank you so much.
Excellent, our next speaker, please.
Next is Donald Glasper, and then Kayla Norris Barber.
Thank you for joining us, name and address for the record, please.
Donald, Donald Glasper, twenty-two forty-one Tuscaloosa Road. First, I'd like to thank the, uh, Commission Body, uh, it's a privilege to stand here and provide some observations and, and comments. I've been a member of the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, uh, for about a year and a half, and I have a unique perspective, uh, given that I've been with the association for about a year and a half. Uh, my arrival there, my men's ministry group, we were engaging the community at John G. Riley Park, John G. Riley Park, right across from the elementary school, okay? We would go out, we would have fish fries, uh, clothing, just providing information to the community to see what the needs were. Well, the Griffin Heights Association, uh, some of the members attended, and they embraced me, and I became an advocate and a full-paid member for that group. Just wanted to give you some of my background, okay? So I do bring a unique perspective. Let me say this, there are some good things in this plan. It, it's written, I've read it several times, I've gone over it with a highlighter, I've gone over it with an ink pen, so I am well acquainted with it. It's a good document. It's the implementation of it. When you go here and you start looking at it, there are legions and icons that's listed in here, and some of it says low-hanging fruit. These are things that you should be able to implement fairly quickly, that's what this says, low-hanging fruit. You should be able to reach up and grab it, but the procuring of this low-hanging fruit, there's a flaw in the system somewhere where, at the John G. Riley Park, we can't even get a, a canopy over the slab so that we can continue to have barbecues or whatever when it's raining, okay? Uh, so there are some improvements there. Now, this park is near and dear to me because it's a central amenity, I see the yellow light is, is on, uh, but, but it's, it's a central amenity, and if we can't improve that and get that right for the common good, then there's a problem. Lastly, let me say this.
Thank you, please wrap.
As, as managers, I've been a manager, what you expect, you should inspect.
Thank you.
And so I invite you all, any one of you, to come to our meeting and inspect what you expect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kayla Norris Barber, Mayor, that's the last speaker on this item.
President.
Kayla Norris Barber, five twenty-seven West Brevard Street, I am also the president of Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association. You actually have before you a decision to make, whether you adopt the residence budget, whether you adopt the staff budget. The major difference between the two budgets is, um, staff budget prioritizes a capital improvement program at thirteen oh nine Alabama Street. The residence budget prioritizes affordable housing. The capital improvement program at thirteen oh nine Alabama Street, residents are recommending that that funding be moved to year three, and here's the logic. Much like you've handled all of your capital improvement programs through your budget process, for how many, like, two hundred years it has been in existence? You handle it in a way where, especially this nature of a project, it's a construction project, you will go through funding for feasibility, design, then construction, it's a multi-year project. So we're simply asking that you handle this project much in the same way, and we're asking that you move the funding for thirteen oh nine Alabama Street into the third year, next year, and prioritize new construction, because there's a dearth of affordable housing in that community. There's been a lot of talk about, um, processes, and I don't, I don't really want to get into that, I just want you guys to concentrate on what citizens of that community is requesting. There's been a lot of talk about whether the process is citizen-driven or whether it's I think there are some issues, but working with staff, I think we can course correct. So I'm asking that you adopt the citizens' budget rather than the staff-recommended budget, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I had missed, um, I misplaced two of the speaker cards with a different item, we do have a Whitfield Leland is our next speaker, and Ernest Farrell, and at that point, if there's another speaker, they'll need to let me know.
Good afternoon, my name is Whitfield Leland, um, seven fifty-four West Seventh Avenue. So, um, I have no issue with this plan, but I am standing before y'all because the Neighborhood Association and the CAT Team, whoever it is, and I spoke to Diana about this, I've talked to Ms. Barber about this, these CAT Teams are very confusing when you're on the ground, trying to figure out what's going on in the neighborhood, because half of them don't live in the community that they're quote-unquote representing or serving. And if you don't live there, how can you know what's going on? It don't matter if you got a business, you running a business tw- the eight hours a day that you there, you're not in the community, talking to these people, stopping to these people, and seeing what they want. I have a issue, well, I don't know, I, but the whole community has an issue with the process, and all I'm asking, man, like, the plan, I, don't nobody really have a problem with the plan, but if y'all say if it's community-driven, I just seen all this that the community want, but I just seen all this that staff said they ain't gonna do. How is you folks, how, how are you gonna get these people to work to come out and do something? Everything that they telling y'all they want to do, we saying, oh, we gave y'all that last year, so we gonna put it in this year budget, is it our fault that it didn't get processed last year? No, it's not our fault. So, we got to come up with a better way of getting our plans, because I'm not, neighborhood plan great, however we got it set up, that's fine, but the knowledge and the education of how it work is effed up, to be honest with you, because we don't know. And if I didn't come to these means, and if I wasn't the person that I was to read, I couldn't relay that to the people that I talked to on the streets. But I'm tired of, it, it shouldn't, I shouldn't have to do it, it should be in layman's terms, whether they understand and they can reach out. Like, we got to change the way the CAT, like, Frenchtown didn't even have a Neighborhood Association, but you got a CAT Team to represent, to tell y'all what the neighborhood need. But only one, only two people stay in that, only two people in that CAT Team live in Frenchtown. Everybody else quote-unquote stakeholders. But don't nobody, can't nobody walk through the neighborhood and be recognized and know who they is but probably Agbar, and that's only because he serve as a criminal justice attorney. So, yeah, we need him in the hood, you feel what I'm saying? So like, at the end of the day, like, we got to do different, like, I'm not up here fussing, I ain't, y'all ain't heard from me, but at the end of the day, it's a, it's a, it's a break in the chain of the process. And I've been talking with staff, I've been trying to work with them, but we got to do something different, and as y'all always say, staff recommendation, now y'all need to give staff direction to try to do something different, and get the, and, and at least give the citizens what they need to get, to do what they need to do.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker, Reverend Farrell, how you doing, sir? Thanks for joining us.
Making a difference.
Thanks for joining us, name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, um, Commissioners, this is an opportunity that I haven't had in about five years since I retired, and so I'm getting a real good feeling of what we used to go to, through, to get things done. I, I'm representing, uh, Miracle Hill at this point. For many of you who have been around a little while, not as long as me, fifty-four years ago, this property is such a historical piece of land in Tallahassee, has provided economic opportunities for a lot of years, since the COVID came through, and we've had some issues for three years because COVID affected not only businesses, but the neighborhood and the community. And we are appreciated very much, first of all, I'm- First of all, I attended a couple of the meetings with the community, and it was a real interesting process. Amen. Kind of process that we used to have a long time ago, when we used to have conferences at church. And we have everybody with 100 different opinions, but they are, when they come out with a product, they all need to be on the same page. And I want to commend the committee and the recommendations, and I'd like to ask this commission to approve the recommendations. We would love to have had more money, but we are happy to be a part of the process. So we'd like to encourage you to approve it so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I don't have any other speakers at this time, unless, oh. We'll take this speaker and we'll get a speaker from Afri.
On up and give us your name and address, if you wouldn't mind filling out a card after the fact, that'd be great.
Yes, actually, how you doing, Mayor? Thank you very much, and good evening, Commissioners, and Ms. Commissioner Porter as well, yes. So good evening, everyone. I did fill out a card, Mayor, and I don't know why it didn't make it up, but I was supposed to speak after the Griffin Heights group anyway. So I just want to say.
Can we get your name, though?
Yes. My name is David Van Williams. I'm the co-chair of the Beautification and Cleanup Committee. On behalf of the Providence Neighborhood Association's Beautification and Cleanup Committee, we want to thank the City of Tallahassee Neighborhood Affairs and Keep Tallahassee Beautiful. The Providence Neighborhood had a successful cleanup on Saturday. Providence participated in the City of Tallahassee Annual Citywide Cleanup. We have volunteers from Neighborhood Association, members of the neighborhood, FSU faculty and students, as well as family students, and it was, and the students volunteered on spring break weekend, by the way. Unfortunately, litter and trash has already began to fall on the streets of Tallahassee because it's happening in Providence Neighborhood. We have developed a solution that would not add more work to the City of Tallahassee. And I just want to close, this solution has already been introduced to Ms. Diane Hansen at the Keep Tallahassee Beautiful Commission, and she seems to like the idea, but since I came up in support of the Griffin Heights community, I decided to share this with the city and thank y'all for what y'all did with keeping control of litter in the city because we do have a big issue. So this is the solution, real quick. We have shared this idea with Ms. Diane Hansen. The plan is to have plastic trash cans throughout the neighborhood with plastic bags because really part of the problem is there's no trash cans, and we have a lot of pedestrian traffic, and we have a lot of convenience stores, so we got a big problem with litter. There would be a Keep Neighborhood, Keep Providence Neighborhood Clean signs next to each trash can. A Neighborhood Block Captain would be identified as a volunteer to take out the bag, tie it, place it next to the can, so when the sanitation workers come through, it's convenient for them to take it on off. It's just a suggestion, but we want to help to, and that person would install a new trash bag, but we just want to share with the city that there is an issue with litter, it's a big problem, and we want to have additional help to address this, and we don't want to wait until our Neighborhood First Plan goes into effect before we can implement some of that low-line fruit that Brother Glasper was talking about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
I'm hesitant to say that's the last speaker, Mayor.
All right, let's go back to public comment. Mayor Pretten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I would like to hear from our deputy city manager because I know she is an intricate part of what's going on with our Neighborhood First plans and programs, particularly the Griffin Heights one. If you could shed some light on the process, what has been going on?
Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, like in all of our neighborhoods, when we go into a Neighborhood First process in a neighborhood, we issue an open invitation for all members of the community to join the CAT team, and that's not just people who live there, but it could be business owners, it's churches that are in those communities. And what we found is that the volunteers come forth, and when we talk about a citizen-driven plan, it was never intended that staff would have no role in this process. The community's role, as defined in the beginning of the program, was that the community would identify their priorities, what they think could make their neighborhood stronger, more viable, and predominantly safer, because that's what the program started as. And so when we developed the plan, none of those ideas came from the city. So when you hear that these are our ideas, these are all ideas that came directly from the community. They put those priorities in the plan, they went even further and established how much they, what they want to see funded. The issue we have today is that, and it's not unique to Griffin Heights, is you have a CAT team, which every, there are CAT team leads, but all of the community was invited to participate, and many do participate in the CAT team process. Then you have a Neighborhood Association, so we want to make sure we always respect the fact that there's a Neighborhood Association there. So we create a process whereby the budget is developed, and then the idea is to reach a consensus budget, a reconciled budget, between those two groups and the feedback from the community. And in this particular case, after many meetings with the group to do that, we were unable to reach a consensus budget. So what our staff did, this is not a staff budget that you're looking at. This budget is the feedback from the community at large. So when you see, for instance, you might not have this detail, we have it, but we didn't share this detail with you, 20 people in the community, not people on the CAT team or people in the Neighborhood Association, but when 20 people in the community say that a particular project is important, but when we get the reconcile, what we hoped had to have been a fully reconciled budget from the community, it gives no funding to that. So then our team sits down and we look at, what did the community say? What did the CAT team say? And what did the Neighborhood Association say? And then that's what these numbers, when we say staff budget, this is not our budget. This is the budget that reflects all of the feedback that we've received, and we've done our best to present a budget that reflects that. When you talk about implementing the project, I've heard some concern about not being able to implement the budget. But part of the problem is not being able to reach consensus on the budget, and it can be something very complicated. The green store, it was purchased because the community said it was a priority. We had no interest ourselves in the green store, the community did. So when you submit a budget that doesn't include any funding, what was, for something that was identified as a top priority, and we've already started funding that project, of course, our staff looks at that, we've got a vendor engaged, and we need funding to complete the project, we make that adjustment. So that's the way that we came up with this budget, but it was not a process where staff did that in isolation or that this reflects staff's priorities at all. This reflects the priorities we've heard from the community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that explanation, because, you know, and I'm looking at some of the residents behind you, they're shaking their heads, and what concerns me is that those who are here today may not have been the ones who were in those meetings, some of those meetings that you're in, and it's probably different groups.
Yeah.
At different times, and so somebody agrees to something, and the next meeting, different group of folks agree to something different, and you know, if that happens in communities, we understand that. But let me just say this part, especially about the store. I led the effort for blueprint to purchase that store because we were told it was a priority because we had a food desert that we were trying to solve. So I am disappointed to see that there was no funding. Once we've gone out and gone through all that we have gone through to purchase this store, to try to solve a problem, a community problem that we heard about, to now see that there's no funding on the line from that meeting to do it, and when you already got people engaged and trying to come in there and provide a service, once we're able to stand it up, that to me reeks of someone needing to be responsible for providing funding so that we can get this store up and going, so that folks can get food without having to go a long ways to get food. So that to me signaled that there was, there's a problem, there's an issue there. So I appreciate staff being able to see that, knowing that we've made this, all these tax dollars belong to the whole, everybody.
Right.
Not just a group of individuals. We got to give an account for the monies that are spent, and so I appreciate the fact that staff saw that. I also appreciate the fact, and I think the neighborhood agreed to this, that Miracle Hill had to be preserved, and we had to do whatever we could do to make sure that because of its employ, its, you know, its economic impact, but also quality of life, because we have so many of our residents who were there, you know, historic individuals, iconic individuals who've gone through Miracle Hill, and we want to make sure that it stays where it is. So there are some things that I see that we've got to have, and we're in the second year. There was $6.4 million allocated. That's $2 million a year, right?
Yes.
So that means that we got one more year, and if we can't spend what we have, then there's never, there won't be a chance of getting anymore if we can't spend what we have. But we need to have some agreement or consensus, in my opinion, on what we need to do to do that. And I understand, I hear the Neighborhood Association, the Community Action Team, the CAT Team, are these different people?
Yes, they are different, they are different people, but Commissioner, again, I introduce that, everyone in the community had the opportunity to participate, and thus, the Neighborhood Association and the CAT Team would be one part of one big, larger group, as opposed to having two different groups. We have the same situation in Bond, where we have a very vibrant Neighborhood Association, we have a very engaged CAT Team. The idea is that the CAT Team, being whomever that is, not necessarily who we have today, put a plan together, they work together to develop that plan, then you have more consensus moving forward. What we have is the plans put together by a group of people who showed up and took ownership and responsibility and helped develop the plan. Then you have people who come into the process after the plan is in place, and people are leaving, like you said, leaving and coming into the process at different phases, and they don't understand the full process that we implement in order to get their feedback. That is a challenge in a process like this, but if a project is to be implemented, if we can get agreement on what project, so on the store, for instance, we can move that project forward. John provided information that many of the projects are in progress at different stages. You'll see things like direct funding of a particular vendor that's recommended by the community. The requirement is that procurement is done consistent with city policy, so we cannot just simply hand $100,000 to a vendor that's identified. So the group bringing that forward will believe they're not being heard. It's not that they're not being heard. You still have the opportunity to fund that through the process that Commissioner Richardson asked about with the engagement funds. You develop criteria, you evaluate that that same vendor can compete for funding and be allocated, but we didn't recommend a direct funding of $100,000 to a particular vendor as requested in the budget that we received.
And again, remind us that this is not CRA, but this Neighborhood First Plan and that process that you just described is the process that has been used for Bond, correct?
Yes.
It is in place for Frenchtown. I understand that there, we got some complications and wrinkles in maybe in Frenchtown that gonna be smoothed out, but it is a process that has been used and has worked. Not, I'm not saying that any process is perfect, but it has been used and it has been working. When you go through Bond, you can see the improvements that have been made, and I understand from Mr. Houston is saying, they want to see something.
Right.
But it sounds like it's hard to see something because we don't have, we're not getting an agreement to move forward, and we're in the second year.
Mm-hmm.
So how was it, how was the $2 million spent last year?
No.
Was it?
It wasn't spent, okay.
It was not spent.
And so staff decided not to sit and wait and watch this year not happening, and decided to try to, let's do something?
Commissioners, there are projects that are in progress. So it's in the, the projects were listed in the presentation provided by Mr. Baker.
Okay.
That says that, you know, for the various categories, what was allocated and what's being, what's being spent already. So on the one, like the $700,000 for new construction, the way this is designed, we don't come up with the program. The community working with the CAT Team comes up with the criteria for the program in order to spend those funds. We don't do that. So there's work that has to be done, where consensus has to be met in order to move forward, Commissioner, and we just don't have it right now.
Well, I would just say, I will say this, this is where I am. The projects that have been listed to be funded, we need to move forward with them. We need Miracle Hill to move forward. We don't need to be holding back. We need that store to be funded so that we can get some milk and eggs. I know the egg expensive now, but we still need to be able to get to the store to get that, and the community engagement pieces can be done. Present your proposal, present your idea, and request the amount that is needed. In the end, what has to happen is we all got to give an account for every penny that's being spent. Staff is going to be held accountable for how that money is being spent, so that's why our check is not being written to the Griffin Heights neighborhood or any other neighborhood. Vendors are being paid for the services that are being provided, and I hope that our neighbors and friends understand this, that that's, this is the process that we agreed to follow that was adopted when we did this. So I'm hoping that we can go back and let's get busy using that money in the community to better it, to make it safe, to beautify it, and to provide for, you know, food and healthy choices in the community. Thank you, Madam Deputy.
Yes, and we'll make sure that the community gets the information that John shared about the progress, those things that are in progress, so that everyone will have the same information.
One final question, for the meetings, do people sign in so that folks know who's at the different meetings? Because their neighbors and friends are probably coming to these meetings, and they just don't know it.
Yes, they do sign in, and I even had a recording of the last meeting, that's how I know what happened during the meeting. They recorded the last meeting, but they generally take role of who's participating in the process.
I would like to see that meeting. If you could share that meeting, that recorded meeting?
Yes.
Because I need to be able to respond when.
I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me jump in real quick. Commissioner, if that's okay? I think we're actually a lot closer than we think we are, which is good stuff. So let me see if I can start honing this in. If everybody will pull up their budget spreadsheet, if we can get it back up. Mr. Baker on the screen. Of the $2 million allocation, if you do a side-by-side, you have 1.3 million already in agreement. So I would suggest, let's take a look at this, and we can start taking things of non-controversy off the table. Let's get the money out the door, okay? What are the things that we agree upon?
Miracle Hill.
We've, I'm getting there. If you look under, let's jump down to Housing Rehab. You got into the column of COT Staff Funding, $600,000. You got Griffin Heights Neighborhood Funding at $487,500. It is safe to say, we agree on $487,500. We should get that out the door. Community Engagement Fund, we agree on $400,000. Let's get it out the door. Economic Development and Residential Empowerment, we agree on $210,000. Let's get it out the door. Micro Enterprise Program, $50,000. Get it out the door. If you look at Neighborhood Safety and Crime Prevention, it's only a $10,000 difference, but we have agreed to $25,000. We just think that it should be $10,000, or I should say, the COT Staff Funding Recommendation is $10,000 more, but we obviously all agree on $25,000 at least. We should get it out the door. Miracle Hill Nursing Home, $125,000. Get it out the door. When we talk about capacity building, the Neighborhood Funding Recommendation is $30,000, the Staff Funding is $25,000. We agree on $25,000. Let's get it out the door. So if you keep moving down through all of the columns, and you table it up out of the $2 million being proposed. $2 million being proposed, what I just walked you through, we actually agree upon 1,322,500. Let's get it out the door. So, the delta that's remaining is 677,500. Mayor Pro Tim, I agree with you 100%. I was right there with you through Blueprint when we acquired the building specifically for, um, you know, to help alleviate the food desert and to be able to move forward. I would suggest that we move forward with 555,000 specifically for the Alabama Street project. That would leave us a remaining delta of 122,500 for discussion. I would suggest that maybe we take one more bite at the apple. I'm looking at my friends in the clergy here. People seem to act a little different when they're sitting in church than sitting in City Hall. Chris Burney and Reverend Farrell, maybe you could pull together the faith-based community that'll pull everybody together in the neighborhood and see if we can figure out those last 122,000 dollars, come back for a final recommendation to this body for formal approval. But I do think that we are, hold on just a second, please. We're not going, we're not going to speak from the audience. We're going to do this in an orderly way. But let's go back to the original. When you look at the side-by-side, the two groups actually agree upon 1.3 million dollars and then some. I suggest that we at least have a motion, or consider a motion, to get that money out the door, because there is agreement on all of that.
I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
And I would second it.
Okay. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to come to you for comment in just a second. Are you, you understand what I'm saying? Is there any questions from staff of what the motion on the table is? Okay. Commissioner Porter, I want to make sure you always have an opportunity to comment as well. Uh, any comment on the, on the item or the motion at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on board. I think that's a great compromise to get that money moving and then come back to, come back to what's left to, to discuss. So, I'm in full support.
Okay. Dean, no further com, uh, Commissioner Matlow.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might a few questions. First question is, when was this item added to the agenda? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we added this on Tuesday.
Yesterday?
Probably, yeah, yesterday, probably around mid, mid-morning.
Okay, so, so, so here's my issue. This is a $2 million decision. We have a staff recommendation that differs from the neighborhood recommendations, and we barely gave 24-hour notice to not just the community. Some people did show up today to speak on it, to even commissioners. You know, I don't believe anybody-
We can add clarity to that, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think anybody had an oppor-
Go ahead, Cynthia.
Well, 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 let Commissioner finish his thought, and then I'll be more than happy to recognize staff. But Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor. You can finish your thought.
Sure, so, 24 hours' notice to the community. You know, no opportunity to ask questions in briefings about any of these decisions or how we got here, so we're, we're making policy on the fly. We're dividing up 1.3 million out of $2 million, um, with essentially a chart that has two sentences, um, on each column based on what, um, we're actually funding. I, I have a big problem with doing business that way, but I also have a problem with, um, what we're even talking about here, you know, altogether. Investment in Griffin Heights and Frenchtown shouldn't be limited to, um, Neighborhood First, um, funding. It, we, we continue to divide communities and act as if there's not enough money to invest in housing where it's needed and grocery stores where it's needed. The grocery store did start conversation, um, at Blueprint because it's an economic development project. Since we've been talking about that project, Florida State's already got $20 million for Doak Campbell Stadium, and that was money we didn't even have. We went out and borrowed it to, to, to give to that stadium. And yet, we continue to divide our community over half a million dollars. Half a million dollars. We spend more mo, we spend more than half a million dollars giving to realtors that bring no-bid land deals to us as a fee for public property we never even listed, um, to begin with. So, uh, it infuriates me when we pit neighbors against neighbors, when we should all be on the same side. We should all be able to fund, um, all of these projects. I would propose we adopt the Neighborhood Funding Plan and add the Alabama Street funding, um, to it. We, we, we have the capacity, um, to be able to fund everything, um, that's, that's, that's on this page. So, I mean, I'm not going to stand in the way of money going out the door for, for a lot of these projects. I, I understand where you're coming from, but I do think we need to look at the process of, of how we're doing this. You know, why didn't we have more notice of this? What's the urgency one day before a city commission meeting that this gets, um, put on? You know, we're talking about people in the community that have different, um, ideas of how this money should be spent, but we didn't give them any opportunity to be here today. Yeah, I mean, if you called me yesterday and said, hey, can you show up at this meeting to defend your, your position? People have real lives, they have jobs they ask out for, they have kids, there's, there's all kinds of reasons. We give a week's notice, um, on, on, on agenda items. So, I just hope in the future, um, we can do better. We can do better how we present, um, items, we can do better with how much resources we make available, um, to communities, um, in need, and we can accomplish, you know, everything and this and more. I wouldn't feel comfortable saying we shouldn't be building new housing right now during a housing shortage, during an affordable housing crisis. We're going to prioritize one, one over the other. Why can't we do both? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to turn it over for staff for a quick, um, response because of the legal aspects and the deadlines we're dealing with, but I do want to thank the members of the community that contacted us, asking us to put this on the agenda for clarity before the hard deadlines came. We are here having this discussion because of you, and we appreciate it, and I hope that we can continue to work forward this evening on this particular issue. But I will come to you in a second, Commissioner Richardson. Cynthia, will you please walk us through the legal aspects of why we are here tonight and the deadlines that we're facing?
Okay, I can't do that, Mayor. I don't know all the various legal, um, deadlines, but I can tell you that the community, the community was fully aware that the item was going to be on the agenda. In fact, when we had the second meeting where they couldn't, the second recent meeting where they could not reach consensus, there was a request for me to meet with the community again. And I felt that staff, having been shouted down in meetings, having to, in the meetings because of the potential problems in the meeting, that they would do better to work together and come up with a budget. And as long as they could get it to me by the first, that I would be able to, uh, I would bring the item forward. So, while it was added as a modification, the community was aware that it was going to be on the, uh, agenda today. So, I'm not aware of the legal deadlines. Are you, Ashley? I'm not, I'm not aware those-
Cynthia, you might need to clarify later for me because you're the ones that were, that you were concerned about the legal deadlines. And we don't need to do it right now, but I just want to make sure that that was on the record as well. Ms. Houston, I'm going to need you to come to the podium in just a second, okay? But go ahead and finish your thing.
Yes, so I want, I want to make sure that you're aware that the community did not receive a one-day notice. They received that from me in writing, explaining the process and asking them to get their information to us, and any information that they would provide would be considered as a part of today's agenda item. And we've been having contact, I've had multiple conversations with me, members of the community over this last week to 10 days about this process. So, they've been fully engaged as late as 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock at night. We're on the phone, working through these issues to try to get to the commission the best example of a, uh, a compromised budget that we could.
Sure. Ms. Barber, how much money have we been spending as well in affordable housing in the past year or two? Through our ARPA funding, through our other programs that we have, rehabilitation programs, site improvement-
City manager.
-dation.
Abena, what's the number? Over 6 million?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so, you know, I, I- Hold on just a second, just a second, Commissioner. My, my point is, is that this is not the only source of money that we have been spending specifically in the realm of affordable housing. This is the first time in the history of the city of Tallahassee that a Neighborhood First Plan has been part of our budget. I was very proud to support it then. We're going to work through these difficult moments, and we're going to be able to move forward as well. But I think it's very important that we clarify that the city's been doing a lot of work and a lot of great work, working with the people all over the city of Tallahassee, and we're going to continue to do so. I got Commissioner Richardson who is-
Yes, I just want to tell you-
Fighting another chomp to get in on this.
Yeah, I, I am because-
Mayor, you funded 100 homes in Bond. I want to make sure, through the Neighborhood First Program.
Right.
Uh, that's a similar kind of program we're trying to implement in Griffin Heights, and you've done how many in?
30.
30, 30 in Frenchtown as well. And each of the communities, I'm hearing somebody say that's a facade because that's what that community voted for in their plan. These plans are unique to the community. Griffin Heights has indicated they like to do some work inside of homes as well, so their plan will reflect that.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson, thank you so much for your patience. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, uh, 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 Mr. Mayor. And this, you know, part of this discussion has been very frustrating, because unless you're there and you know what's going on, I, I want to thank Sarah because at the meeting on Saturday-
Yep.
She invited me to come to a Neighborhood Association meeting so I could see firsthand and hear firsthand what was going on. I've heard about, uh, the dysfunction, and I'm going to call it what it is that's been going on in that area, and people not being able to agree on, and, and having to, uh, each meeting go through the budget again, and, and there not being agreement on what should be done and when. And so, staff, and I, and I give them credit, they, we, we have an excellent staff. We really do. And they have tried to work to the best of their ability to put something together that could come before us, and we could start seeing things happen. And I give them credit for that.
That's right.
Now, when you talk about pitting one part of the community against the other, that, Commissioner, that is not correct. There's, there's nothing that could, is, could be more different than that. This is, it, the, the Neighborhood First Plan for Griffin Heights does not pay for sewage, it does not pay for utilities, it does not pay for sanitation, it does not pay. All of those are services that the taxpayers of those neighborhoods receive because they are taxpaying citizens. This is all extra money. This isn't even, as, uh, Mayor Pro Tim mentioned, this isn't even CRA money. This is money that we directed the city manager to come up with out of our general revenue budget for the Griffin Heights neighborhood, which all of it is not in the CRA. And, and so, that's what we have been trying to accomplish. And I, you know, I don't know why this Doak Campbell Stadium has to come up all the time. That, that is, that is done and over with.
Let's have a little bit of order, please. We're not going to have this general discussion. Commissioner Richardson, you have gotten the floor, sir.
And so, what we're trying to do is ensure that every one of these neighborhoods has what they need in order to be redeveloped and revitalized. We've made that commitment. The challenge is, is for the neighborhoods to come together and come to agreement on what it is they want. Like, uh, Deputy City Manager Barber said, this is not staff-driven. They're trying to move this thing forward, and it's not being moved forward. And so, that's why I am ready today to vote on a budget that can be taken back to the neighborhoods and, to the neighborhood, and they can start to see things happen. Uh, uh, somebody said earlier, a shelter in Riley Park, if that's something that the neighborhood wants to get done, that can be done, Ashley.
It's not, it's not in-
No, no, I'm just saying through neighborhood affair, I mean, uh, uh-
It's not in their plan.
Parks and Rec.
But it's not in their-
If that's what they want in that park, that is a city park. If they're asking for that, then that could be, if we can't pay for it this year in this year's budget, maybe next year, we can, we can look at that. But we, we're at a point now where we just need to start moving forward, and I have promised, Ms. Houston, that I would come to meetings so that I can hear what's going on, I can get information firsthand, and not based on something I heard from somebody third and fourth-hand. Uh, but we've got to, we've got to move forward. Y'all, these, these neighborhoods are not getting any better because of conversation we're having in forums like this. We really need to get this money on the street and get projects done that are going to better the quality of life for the people who live in these neighborhoods.
All right.
That, that's where I am.
Let's start whittling this down a little bit. The motion on the table that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson-
Made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by me.
Oh, excuse me. Made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim, is actually all the money that we agree upon, everybody agrees upon. That is a total of 1.3225 million dollars. 1,322,500 that I walked through. Again, staff, are we clear on that?
Yes, sir.
We're ready to move forward and get that out. And we'll leave a delta of 677,500 that we can discuss in a second, but I suggest that we take this vote first for the motion on the table. Let's get it out the door and then continue the conversation, okay? All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Great. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Now, where we are, and I'm coming to you in just a second, Mayor Pro Tim, there is a delta now of what we disagree upon of 677,500. Now, I agree with you on the Alabama Street projected funding. That would be 555,000. Obviously, you take the delta and take out the Alabama Street funding, that leaves a new balance of 122,500. Lay that out, let's have a discussion. Mayor Pro Tim, you're right.
I would like to, I, I would make the motion that we would move forward with the 555,000 for the 13, 1309 Alabama Street.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion in a second that we move forward with the recommendation of 555,000 for 1309 Alabama Street. Is everyone clear on the motion that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson? Staff, are we good with that?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Porter, any questions or comments? I don't know if we have Commissioner. Okay.
Can, can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So, can you clarify for me? Is that the remaining funding that, where there was not agreement?
So, the remaining funding where there was not agreement totals 677,500. The recommendation, which is the motion on the table, is out of that amount, take 555,000, which is the, um, the, the recommendation for the 1309 Alabama Street, the parcel that we acquired through the Blueprint, um, agenda item. So, if-
Okay, thank you.
-passes, Commissioner Porter, it would leave a delta of 122,500. If the motion fails, then there would still be 677,500, basically that is not agreed upon between the community.
Okay, and I, I support funding the grocery store. I guess I was under the impression that we were maybe going to take some more time and revisit the remaining of the funding. So, it would be my preference that we move forward with where there's agreement and revisit the remainder. Um, so that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I have a hard time cutting 450,000 and housing construction money, um, um, from this plan. I agree that there's differing opinions on, um, how the rest of the money should be spent, and I think we should come to some sort of, um, conclusion. My understanding is the conclusion today for this vote would be, let's fund the grocery store, but not housing and some of the other programs as recommended, um, by the neighborhood. And again, I, I, I believe we have the capacity, um, to fund both. Um, so I make a substitute motion, um, that we bring back an item to expand funding to be able to include, um, the remainder of the Neighborhood Funding Plan as well as 1309 Alabama Street.
Second.
All right, one more time.
Um, to, to bring back an item, so at our next meeting in two weeks, we could take up an item, um, that identifies additional funding so we can make up the, the deficit of, I believe, possibly 555. So, it would fund the remainder of the neighborhood's requests as well as, uh, the grocery store.
Okay. There's a substitute motion on the table by Commissioner Matlow that has been seconded by Commissioner Porter. Coming to you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting that motion for this simple fact. This is just for this year's funding. New housing construction can move to the, to the next year or whatever was used in last year or if there's any remainder, that can happen there. The other part of it is for the different childcare or children and family issues, we have a Children's Services Council that funding can be sought there to satisfy these additional requests. So, I'm focused, keenly focused on the grocery store and not to be distracted by any, any of these other things because we need to get that moving. So, I'm focused on the grocery store, so I will not be supporting the substitute motion.
Okay. Any further comment? There's a substitute motion on the table made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Three to two with the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. We are back on the original motion that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You are recognized for comment. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, this, this is not an either/or.
No.
Right.
For housing or not for housing. We've got housing initiatives going on all over this city. 300,000 affordable housing units in the pipeline. Some of those could be for Griffin Heights. We've got a partnership with Tallahassee Lenders Consortium for housing. We've got a partnership with Habitat for Humanity for housing. So, to portray this as either/or, that's not the case. There will still be housing made available in the Griffin Heights neighborhood if it's not funded through this pot of money. So, I want everybody to be clear on that.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I 100% agree. It's not either/or. That's why my proposal was, we fund both. It shouldn't be either/or. Both of these matter, but I would say, even with everything we're doing for housing, we need to do more. We have to. You know, prices continue to increase. We're not creating enough stock to meet demand, so I don't think we can, we can say mission accomplished on the housing crisis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I've just, I just can't sit here and continue this. Nobody's saying mission accomplished. We're going to, we're going to be working on housing until, you know, Jesus come. So, it's not that if we don't do it now, it's not going to happen. And we are faced with some imminent issues right now that we've got to deal with. And we got communities, we got people who are waiting for us to do something. And I'm ready to do the something. Let's move with this. And to keep throwing stuff out without solutions, and I saw a quote today, I forgot who it was, to keep throwing out, pointing out problems and not solutions is whining. And I think that it's time for us to stop whining and let's get on with the business of the people to get moving in Griffin Heights, Bond, and wherever else, in Frenchtown, wherever else we need to move to better the people in those communities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Original motion on the table was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment?
Would clarify the motion?
Well, it was just reversed.
Did I get it backwards again?
The motion was to fund the store
Right.
for 555,000.
Sure, sure, sure. 1309 Alabama Street, 555,000.
That's it. That's it.
Correct. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. May I recommend that the remaining balance, Mr. Baker in Neighborhood Affairs, let's go back to the table, bring everybody together.
Yeah.
You've got a delta of 122,500 in this fiscal year. Let's see if we can come to an agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I would also suggest that there's, begin to be discussion about next year's budget.
Now, yeah.
If this is what we're going to run into, and I hope that we don't, but it wouldn't be too early, I don't think, to begin some preliminary discussion about what will be needed in next year's budget. So, we don't run into this.
Excellent. Okay. Do we have any other business come before us tonight at City Commission?
No, sir.
Excellent. We're on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clark, how many speakers do we have?
I have seven.
Okay. Let's begin.
The first of which would be Stanley Sims, but I'm going to say it's Max Epstein. We'll come to Mr. Sims if he comes back in chambers.
Excellent. Your name and address for the record, please.
Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I'm here in, to ask the City Commission's support in a historic preservation opportunity in College Town. Recently, I think it was two weeks ago, he gave up an easement for a development and it's part of the same development that bought, it was $4 million, I think it was a sale. Four of the last six remaining homes that were constructed between, before 1916 are on that footprint. So, we're hoping that potentially the city can help us work with a developer. And FSU owns quite a bit of land right to the east. The buildings could be moved, hoping that they might find a permanent home there or at the very least, a temporary home. We could move them there until something more permanent could happen. Obviously, not trying to stop this development in any way, but I think it's important to preserve the last little bit of our history. That's what makes Tallahassee special for me. We'd only need about a quarter of an acre and there are historic preservation grants and other loans that are available. You know, I know that that area may be redeveloped by FSU in the future, but again, it could be a temporary home. So, I'm hoping that you could lend your support to try and make something like that happen. They're functional housing units. I mean, they're houses, so people could live in them. So, that's my spiel. I hope that you consider it, make a motion perhaps to help work with the developer, FSU and the city. It wouldn't cost very much and it could also potentially come out of economic development funding from Blueprint. I think probably less than $100,000 would do it. And hopefully, the developer would spend the money that they were going to spend on demolition to help with the move. So, I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Michael McLaughlin. Then I'll announce Stanley Sims again. Follow him if he's still here.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hello. Good afternoon. Happy International Women's Day. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I live at 100 Cade Street. And I'm here with a concern about Tallahassee police officer who was not fired despite testing twice for amphetamines. From the news reports, I've learned that 21 city employees were fired over the last two years for testing positive for controlled substances. And this raises very serious questions about why this particular employee was not held accountable in the same way that other city employees were. I think it also from news reports that it raises questions around dynamics within the city about who is in charge and who the, who Police Chief Lawrence Revell is actually accountable to. I think most importantly, I think I speak for most city residents when I say that I'm less concerned about an office worker, city office worker testing positive for a controlled substance than I am a police officer, as police officers drive cars and carry guns as part of their job. Ultimately, this sort of story highlights that the people, the citizens of Tallahassee deserve to know the specifics of why this officer was not held accountable for their actions in the same way that other city employees would have. This is the exact sort of situation that shows why we need civilian oversight of the police. Although, as you know, the Tallahassee Community Action Committee believes that our current civilian police review board falls short of the true civilian police accountability that we need. We do recognize it as a tool that we have and so we urge you to have it. It hasn't happened in a while, not since you removed more than half the board and so you don't have a quorum and stuff like that. And so, this, this is like, this is like the perfect sort of example of why we need this review board. We need citizens to be able to look into this and to hold and to, you know, well, they can't really hold this city accountable, but they should be able to. But anyway, we need, we need the citizens' police review board back for situations like that. So, I have, I have 45 seconds. Whoa, talking fast. As I walked in today, I heard you voted on to approve the grant funding for protected bike lanes and I just wanted to say, as a bicyclist, I'm really, really glad to hear that. I wanted to speak on that earlier. I'm glad to see that the city is trying to implement infrastructure to make sure that everyone has good transportation options, including people like myself who rely on bicycles to get around. I also encourage city staff to make sure that this infrastructure is placed in places where the most bicyclists go. I think recent data shows about three to four bikes per hour on the routes where you're going to put the, the protected lanes, but there are other places like Gaines Street, the Gaines and railroad intersection, or the Ocala and High and Tennessee Street intersection where there is a lot more bike traffic. But I encourage you to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims, then Delilah Pierre.
Good afternoon, Mayor. 1320 Avondale Way. I really love the way you approached that last thing. I appreciate. Also, Mayor, I want to acknowledge National Women's, Attorney Cassandra Jackson, Jennifer, and this is a surprise, Ellen Blair. When I read that Tallahassee Democrat article, two, three strong courageous women standing on the line. Integrity means something. Consistency means something. I was... Mayor, I contemplated in telling this in August, I received a call from a white police officer telling me about this very incident. I was scared because I thought I was being set up. I told him, "You go get me two black Leon County sheriff deputies to verify that what you're saying is the truth, then I'll move forward." I got a call. I called Commissioner Matlow at the end of August. I said, "Commissioner Matlow, this man don't trust me and I don't trust him. This officer I don't trust and we don't trust each other because this is a delicate situation that needs to be handled." Consistency and trust and integrity is important, especially in this climate with the police. Now, I'm going to say this. When that black officer got caught fighting off duty, I agree, fire his butt. But when it came up and I read the great degree that the, that the chief of police went to defend this guy, attorney, I take five medicines, one for my heart, three for my blood pressure and one for my depression and everything. Nobody in my family, in all the years I take medicine, has accidentally took it. Even my dog, even Prince, he'll go down there and smell it, but he won't lick it up. It looks like our city is not about what's right, but who's right. That's an unfortunate feeling when you challenge and talk to the city attorney in the fashion that he spoke to these lady, that was troubling. I like that. I've given you my opinion. I'm going to start using that one. In urban, I say what I say. Someone needs to stand up to what is right in our local government and I commend these three women
Thank you.
for standing up for an officer with a positive drug test when we've never allowed that before.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre, then Francois Lewis.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah. I will not be giving my address. I'm here to speak about the DBD officer who was found using amphetamines, basically not being given any punishments or charges by our city, by our police officers. I think it's very obvious when, you know, like, our city can turn a cup that says abolish police brutality into an entire story, weave a fiction around it saying that, you know, a member of our civilian police review board said F the police and saying that they have this kind of like anti-police sentiment or behavior. But then when a police officer is found doing something that would get any other person in Tallahassee arrested, any civilian in Tallahassee arrested, and a city that's had the chance to decriminalize marijuana for people but refuses to, and there's no say about it, there's no real conversation about it, the only reason we know about it is the press decided to leak it and give information to the public about it. And if that wasn't the case, I'm sure the City Commission wouldn't be the ones actually communicating about what's happening. Even worse than this, you know what I mean, we're supposed to have a vehicle and mechanism for there to be accountability for police officers and whether this case falls directly under its purview, I think it's very noticeable that we're missing the civilian police review board's existence. I don't believe they've met in, I don't know, maybe about two or so months after Taylor Bureau was removed from the board and two members of the board weren't reinstated. There seems to be no urgency or need to recreate the civilian police review board in the city of Tallahassee and to even make a pretense of having some kind of mechanism for accountability for police officers in this city. When Tony McDade, Rahim Reader, Will Bond Woodard and Michael Johnson were killed in the city, the civilian police review board was supposed to be created to make sure situations like that didn't happen again. And I don't see at all that the city is taking accountability or action to make sure that situations like that aren't happening again. You can reinstate the civilian police review board and not just reinstate them, but give them more power, such as not punishing them for making press releases about the board, allowing them to make public statements and allowing them to call special sessions. That is under their purview and that is something that they can have the power to do, even if they don't have the power to do that currently. It's not something that state law prevents whatsoever, despite state law making it almost impossible to hold police officers accountable. So, I demand that we reinstate the civilian police review board, that we actually give them some power over their affairs and also that we fire this officer known to take amphetamines. This is a person who has power over people in our community, you know? This is a person who can harm other people in our community because of the weapons, structure and strength that he's given and we seem to not care about it. But anytime anyone in this city decides to have any kind of political viewpoint or consideration that doesn't fit inside your entire purview and perspective of what should happen, nothing happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Francois Lewis, followed by Rodney Lander.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Francois Lewis. I'd rather not share my address, but I live in the Griffin Heights community. I'm probably one of the youngest stakeholders in the Griffin Heights community. I purchased a home in Griffin Heights in 2020. Mr. Mayor, you probably don't remember me, but we met first when I was an intern at the Akbar Law Firm. I was a young intern, I was an undergrad, then I went on to pursue my master's degree at Florida A&amp;M University and I'm currently a J D candidate preparing for law school in August. I mention all that to say that I chose to move into the Griffin Heights community. It wasn't a decision that was for the faint of heart, it was a decision that was very intentional when I decided to move into the Griffin Heights community. And Ms. William Cox, I know that you mentioned some, you mentioned that we need to find resolutions instead of pointing out problems, but I do want to point out some of the issues that I've experienced while attending Griffin Heights meetings. Some of the issues that I've experienced is that the city personnel, I wish the deputy city manager was here. I emailed her personally and I asked her to come out to one of our meetings. I emailed her personally and she responded back by stating that she felt that her team had exhausted all efforts and that she would not attend the following meeting. That is definitely, for the record, you guys can see, in the last meeting that we attended, you can see that there was a heavy rebuke because it's a shame to see people that look like me not being able to get along, to push an agenda forward for people that, for the community it pertains to, if that makes sense. So, there is a heavy rebuke in that recording. The recording is about two hours and 30 minutes long, so I would implore each of you to listen to that recording because there was a heavy rebuke that I sent forward. In addition to that, what I would like to say is that oftentimes, whenever the city is meeting up with the community, it's more of a dictatorship. This is the agenda, this is what we want you guys to listen to, and there is no back and forth as far as discussion within the members of the community. And that is a major, major problem. In addition to that, the CAT team, there are like one or two members that typically attend all of the meetings that we have, right? And the CAT team members aren't always... And the CAT team members aren't always in agreement with the members of the community, which is fair. It's fine. However, the problem is, is that most of the members of the CAT team do not live within the Griffin Heights community. So therefore, I'm not saying that their agenda is skewed, or they shouldn't be able to have a say-so in it. What I am saying is that there should be some type of restructuring, and there should be some type of, there should be some type of way that the members of the city present their argument or present their proposal to the Griffin Heights community, in which we can then go ahead and better plan it. Because we spent, when I moved into the Griffin Heights community about 2020, we spent three months, three to six months actually, before they came up with an application for the housing rehab.
You have about 20 seconds.
And so that's a problem itself. Thank you, sir. That's a problem itself. They're taking so long to present certain information for it that is necessary in order for us to move the agenda forward. And I think that if we would go ahead, if the city would go ahead, not saying you guys, but I'm saying if the city would go ahead and do more planning and then present it to us, we'd be more effective. That is just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Next is Rodney Lander, and then Kimberly Murphy.
I don't have to repeat my name or address. You have it. I came here to say two things, and I'll be firm in saying them. The reason that you were told that there was no money allocated by the Community Action Team for the store is because the city did not include the CAT team lead's recommendation in what you saw. I came here before you all initially in September of 2021. You approved the money for that store. We should have been way down the road on that store. We recommended $555,000, which was not reported by John today. Bottom line is, we want that store. We appreciate what you have done, and we plan to move forward on it. In June of this past year, we asked, John asked us to allow the city, because they had vetted architects already, to use an architect that was vetted for that store. We said, "Okay, we will have it reported in one month." The report was advanced to us in January, nine months later. From ALW Architects, I can tell you that leaving this meeting, none of the money has been funded fully for the store. You can better bet that we will be moving on that store, getting an architect, getting a contractor to come in, give us the numbers on it so we can move forward. Thank you very much for that. And the other item is that the Community Engagement Fund, I would suggest that you, as commissioners, and the city staff, as city staff, read more about what a Community Engagement Fund is, from corporations to Florida State University, to Florida A&amp;M University, to the Urban Planning Department at Florida State University. Community engagement involves not giving money to people to have a birthday party at Heritage Trail. It involves people coming together, discussing what needs to happen, and being of one accord to get it done. And so I think that if we did more of that, we wouldn't be doing more of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Kimberly Murphy. Mayor, that's the last speaker card I have here in chambers. We do have one online.
Great.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kimberly Murphy. I stay on Alabama Street, and I just want to say this has been, my anxiety is really bad. I wish I would have spoke earlier before you guys made your votes because I think you kind of got the wrong, I guess, the wrong, when you look at Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, you look at CAT team, and you look at CAT team leaders, those are three different teams. Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association, I attend every meeting. Griffin, I mean, the CAT, what is it, CAT team, whatever, I attend everyone. So when you say they're separate entities, they're not. What they do, they invite the neighborhood there, and we've been, we're here, been to every meeting. So when they're saying that we didn't come up to an agreement on the first or whatever before the time that was due, that's not true. We spent an hour fussing. That is correct because we are very passionate about our neighborhood. But the last hour and a half, we made decisions. We compromised. We came together, and we made a decision. As far as this store goes, we do want to see the store. We do want to see something in that area, not necessarily the store, another store, because all those stores that's ever been there, that green store, the bended store, has been nothing but a drug fest. You know what I'm saying? The other store down the street is the same thing. So we're trying to come together, come with some different ideas for that area, not just a store. It already has $450,000 in the budget for that store. They only spent $30,000 the first year. So you're adding additional $550,000, which gives you $1.2 million to build a 2,500-square-foot store. So in our opinion, we don't even know what the $1.2 million is building. The city of Tallahassee came to us and said, "Hey, we want a store. We're going to concentrate on this store. That's all we really want is this store." We understand that. Yes, we understand it. But to tell us this $1.2 million without telling us what kind of store it's going to be, besides the fact it's 2,500 square feet, and not coming up to details, I literally asked, sent an email to Julian to ask her what is specified, what is the cost analysis of this store, and we still haven't got it. And this is not the first time we've asked for the scenario of all of that behind it. So it's not that we don't want the store. It's the fact that we want facts behind how you came up to $1.2 million on a 2,500-square-foot facility. It makes no sense to us. And when you're talking about Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association can't get along, no, we get along. We get along just fine. Our budget's been together for months. The city of Tallahassee just came together in February, trying to get this budget together. But our budget's been together since last year. So we brought that budget here, and when they did their checklist, they dismissed the whole thing and just focused on what they wanted to do. And it's been the whole process through this whole thing. So when they say we're not showing up for meetings, most of those people that was on that, 20 people, were the 25 people at the original meeting. So when we said we're not going to stand here, when they came where, I guess you could say, their particular meeting, we decided not to sign this sheet and say we are not going to vote for this because it was all what they wanted us to do. So we wanted to come together, together, the CAT team leaders, the CATs, and Griffin Heights Neighborhood to make our decision, and we did that. The only thing is, the things they put, the people they put in charge did not give them the information at time. But Mr. Barbie gave, what's his name, Baker, on time. So we did make a decision. So that's, this meeting right here is really heating me up and breaking, oh my gosh. I'm just going to sit down because I really did not want to speak, but I had to say something.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Gillian Temple, who I'm assuming is still connected. Nope, the speaker we had virtually, Mayor, has dropped, so we do not have any other speakers at this time that I'm aware of.
No other speakers. Anyone else here that would like to speak? Okay, let's move to the sharing of ideas. Mr. Madlow, you're the farthest that are in chambers. Commissioner Porter, I'll come to you second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm going to take it from the top on the city's drug policy. I'm alarmed that we have policies in the city of Tallahassee that are just completely ignored. So I have a series of questions, Mr. Manager, because I'm just trying to get an understanding of, you know, how we got to where we are today. Just starting at the top, can you tell me the purpose of the drug-free workplace policy?
Mr. Manager.
I'm going to ask Ben Ojatay, who's our assistant city manager of that area to...
Mr. Manager, with respect, we've heard professional staff opinion. We saw that in reporting. As manager of the city of Tallahassee, I'm asking you personally.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Ben Ojatay to answer this one.
Great.
Good afternoon. Good evening. We have a drug and alcohol policy that provides guidance on how we will test safety-sensitive positions in the organization, which includes those that are being tested before employment, or those that may be needed to be tested for suspicion, reasonable suspicion, and those that are tested randomly. And that typically involves police officers and so forth that are on a rotation. The guidelines are there to support departments as they supervise their staff in safety-sensitive positions. There is a series of protocols and processes outlined in that, which includes the testing process that our staff initiates, the medical review officers, and the clinics that are part of the procedure that provide us the results, and how we communicate that to directors with guidance on which actions that they may take. The policy is the main policy that governs our personnel overall. However, there is a connection to that as well with our collective bargaining agreements. Wherein certain policies, not just the drug and alcohol policy, but other policies that may need to be specified in the collective bargaining agreements, they are. And so in this case, there's a drug and alcohol policy that governs all of personnel. However, there is the controlling document of the collective bargaining agreements that specifies a process for those employees that are underneath the union.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, to you again to redirect. My question is, why do we have a drug and alcohol policy? What's the underlying reason the city has that policy?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm going to defer these questions to Ms. Ojatay. I think she just answered the question, but I'm not sure there's any more clarity that could be provided on that. I don't understand the distinction of the question and the difference in the answer that was provided.
I think, and I appreciate the explanation. I think you very succinctly explained the policy in place by the city of Tallahassee and how it's implemented. My question to the manager is, I'm just trying to gain understanding if our management has an understanding of why these policies are in place. And the reason these policies are in place are to mitigate risk, to protect the city of Tallahassee, to protect the city of Tallahassee's employees, to protect the people that live in the city of Tallahassee. It's not a policy. It's not just a book on a shelf. The reason we have these in place, because if you are driving a vehicle, we don't want you to be under the influence of a controlled substance like cocaine. If you have a firearm, we don't want you to be under the use of a controlled substance. That's the entire purpose of the policy. So I mean, that was my first question, and again, I'm alarmed that management doesn't understand the reason we drug test, to begin with. So my second question would be, and you briefly touched on it, but can you walk us through how our drug policy testing works? Since, in the email I received, since October 2020, 2013 drug tests have been administered at the city of Tallahassee. So the first step, it's a random drug test?
There are different types of tests that the policy outlines. So as I mentioned, there are certain employees that are subject to random tests, and that is, there's a pool, and there's a selection methodology that is developed that identifies those employees that are subject to randomized tests. And when they are identified, they're notified to go to the medical facility that they submit their samples to, and that's communicated back to us and to the department as well as far as the results. There are employees or applicants for employment that undergo drug testing as well, so we have a process for them as they submit applications. And as I mentioned, there's also a third category of individuals that, because of reasonable suspicion from a supervisor, for example, they might request them to undergo a drug test. So the policy does outline various reasons for doing the tests and the general process for acquiring the results and communicating that to the departments. The policy is very clear that the discretion, the decision is at the department level. Okay? And so when an employee is subject to drug testing, our HR office implements the testing and communicates the results, and the final action is always with the department director.
Okay, so walk me through the process. I get selected for a random drug test, but I just had a surgery, so I'm prescribed some opiates. I test positive?
I can't answer that. I mean, this is, the tests are submitted to an external entity. They perform the test. They communicate to us that result.
But if someone has a prescribed medication for a legitimate reason, so they're going to get a positive test result?
It is determined by the medical review officer that considers all the information, and I presume they would look at the actual test results.
Okay.
And if there's further conversation that needs to be had with the employee, they would do so, and based on that, they communicate the final result to the city, whether that is communicated as a positive or a negative.
Okay, so if I have a prescription, I show it to the MRO. What gets communicated to the city?
What gets communicated to the city is the MRO's decision about what the test results should be, and they tell us positive or negative.
Positive or negative. So in theory, or in practice, if you have a legitimately prescribed prescription that you're taking and you test positive, you talk to your MRO, your employer, your city should, you know, doesn't need to know, and that would come back negative. So in our drug testing policy, if you are legitimately taking a prescribed medication, your employer, the city, would never know. They don't have the right to do. So if you do test positive, that's because you've tested positive for an illegal controlled substance, the use of illegal controlled substance. And my question is, what does city policy say action to be taken is if you test positive for an illegal controlled substance?
The policy communicates that once the result is received as a positive, the HR staff communicates to the department director, and the guidance is that an employee is terminated.
An employee must be terminated. Okay. What departments have discretion not to terminate?
Those under the collective bargaining agreement. They have...
Both Fire and Police?
The discretion for your specific question on the Police Department is, there are different categories of test results where the chief can exercise any action leading up to termination.
And that's after the first test result?
This is after the result has been communicated to him concerning the employee.
Okay.
The test results are from the same specimen.
So every...
Okay.
I apologize. So, I mean, taking that across the entire city of Tallahassee, every department, the only department where we're saying that you have discretion not to terminate somebody who's tested positive for an illegal controlled substance, is the Tallahassee Police Department?
Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Correct. How did that come to be? Mr. Manager?
Collective bargaining, I'm assuming.
That's right.
So the final decision was with the elected officials, whoever passed that, whenever the collective bargaining was before they met that time, correct?
Yes, that discretion is specified in the collective bargaining agreement.
And has the, was that change in a collective bargaining agreement ever discussed publicly or part of a public agenda item outside of the actual contract, Mr. Manager?
I don't know.
No. It would be helpful to know how we got to a situation where we have illegal controlled substance positive tests in the city of Tallahassee, how we got there to begin with. I disagree that the collective bargaining agreement gives that discretion. While it does mention discretion, it also mentions it must be terminated. And if both guidances are there, I think that is what that policy is speaking to. I think city of Tallahassee policy is clear on what direction it needs to be. And again, going back to the beginning, we're at tremendous risk because everybody who tests positive moving forward is going to say that they have an excuse. You know, maybe they accidentally touched it. You know, maybe, you know, it's their friend's prescription, or, you know, they popped aspirin and it was the wrong pill. So what, when we look at how discretion is used at the Tallahassee Police Department, what criteria, what type of investigation is done to get to the decision-making point? That may be a question for the chief.
I'd like to ask Deputy City Manager to help with that because she was intimately involved in this. I think this...
Does the policy, does the policy give...
She can speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Come on down, Cynthia. Come join the party. Deputy City Manager, thank you.
Cynthia, I believe you probably can describe the process used in this case. Obviously, it's case by case, but I think this might be a good example to answer the Commissioner's question.
Yes, so when we received information of a positive test result, the chief reviewed the policy, was determined that he had discretion. First, let's back up. You talked with the employee to find out what could have happened here. Why do you have a positive result? The employee offered an explanation. The chief didn't simply take that explanation. Realizing the policy gave him the discretion, he wanted to speak with, and did in fact speak with, the medical review officer, the same one that HR depended on for its decision or its information.
Can I stop you real quick? At this point, this is still confidential personnel information that's covered by HIPAA requirements, correct?
Correct. The chief, it's on a need-to-know basis, so the chief would have had the ability to know.
Madam Attorney, I don't, we're discussing the policy and the implementation of... and the implementation of the procedures and the policy.
But what I'm asking is, when, because I'm not a medical doctor and attorney, when you're discussing people's medical history, there's HIPAA requirements involved on a need-to-know basis, correct?
HIPAA actually applies to the transmittal of electronic medical information. So, you know, certainly a policy can be discussed without talking about people's confidential information, yes.
Yeah, so it'd be confidential with this conversation.
Yes, so the chief had a conversation because he was privy to the information. He had, he had a conversation with the medical review officer. The medical review officer, one of the questions was, could the explanation provided by the officer justify the result that we're seeing? The medical review officer said that it could. And the medical review officer went on to say that he could not say that it was some type of illicit use or a pattern of the employee. There were a number of factors that he did not have information on, like how often they exercise, and a number of other issues that would have, that he would need to come to that conclusion. He went on to say that based upon the information, if we have an employee, given that he believes that this explanation that the employee provided could account for the result, that he, if it were, if it were him making this decision, he would not terminate the employee. In particular, if you had a good employee, he would work to keep the employee. And that's, and then, of course, the chief consulted with me to let me know the results of that conversation and exercised the discretion that was given to him in the policy.
All right, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you. And I think that explanation, you know, certainly says he couldn't confirm that it's illicit drug use, but I also don't think it necessarily seems to be, a test can rule that out, but neither here nor there. I like to, so that's the investigative process we will use moving forward every time there's a drug test, is the chief will contact the MRO, part one. And then, part two, was there any further investigation done to validate?
Any further investigation to?
You offered a potential scenario, but, but what investigation? Was there an IA investigation? How did we determine that the explanation given was true?
From the medical review officer, who is the expert in this case?
He confirmed that this was a, I, I'm confused here. So, the medical, what did the, you're saying the medical review officer confirmed?
The medical review officer indicated that the, the definite, the information that the employee provided as to why he could potentially have this, a positive result is a viable reason and for having such a result.
Did he confirm that is what happened?
Did who confirm that?
Did they confirm that using someone else's prescription is what happened? Did, did, do we have a policy that we confirm that?
Certainly, unless you were there, you could not, you could not confirm that. He couldn't confirm whether he used it or not if he were not there. But he said the explanation that was provided was consistent with such a use.
So, we don't have any confirmation of what mayor had. My concern going back to is, how do we treat one case versus the next case? And if the next case says, I accidentally, you know, used cocaine?
All of the cases.
How, how can we expect our policy to direct the solution going forward? Under my understanding is we have a city drug policy that's very clear in direction. And I'm trying to figure out what the city commission can do to make it more clear that this is not acceptable.
The answer to the first part of the question is, each case is evaluated on its merit. So, we don't look at what happened in another case. We look at the merits of the case, the test result, and any other relative information related to that particular case.
I'm going back to, how are we going to protect the city of Tallahassee when we start getting sued by people who get terminated because they say they accidentally took the drugs? Are we going to take a stance that if you accidentally took drugs, you can continue to be employed in the city of Tallahassee? Mr. Manager, I'm looking for guidance on how we rectify which, which, you know, your, your guidance seems to be a lapse in policy. I don't see that, but how do we close this loophole?
Well, the, the simple answer, I'll answer, is you are more than welcome to bring this up during collective bargaining, during our closed-door sessions for discussion and formally put that on the table with the majority of the commission in the, because it's part of collective bargaining. So, they didn't, they don't have the power just to bring it before us right now for a vote. And we, we're in the collective bargaining process. If you'd like to pursue this, I'd encourage you to bring it up, Commissioner Matlow.
So, to be clear, I mean, this, Mr. Mayor, your, your direction is that the city manager doesn't have responsibility for not following the current drug testing policy. There's no clear way to investigate drug use because we've never allowed it before. Out of 22 positive drug tests, 21 people got terminated. I didn't, I'm going to just take a step back, and I appreciate you. You're in a tough position. And same with Ms. Ojitaio, because what, what happened was wrong. And we, our city manager should have recognized that as, that as wrong. While certainly the chief may have discretion, again, I don't think so based on the agreement, the city manager has a responsibility to protect the city of Tallahassee. The city manager has a responsibility to ensure the policies of the Tallahassee are followed. And I just wonder, how many more times are we going to come back here? There's something wrong with this government. We've never saw this with Anita Favors. We never saw this with Rick Fernandez. We are so far past normal that we're about to say the drug policies in the city of Tallahassee don't matter. We have investigations that are at the chief's discretion, but they aren't written into policy. It doesn't go to any type of investigation body. When another officer gets fired for, for being arrested, that doesn't have a similar investigation policy. But the taxpayers are going to get fleeced because we're not doing our job. This commission's derelict of its duty to enforce the policies of the city of Tallahassee. And, you know, and I want to just take a step back and apologize to all the hard-working people of the city of Tallahassee who are doing the right thing, who have the courage to stand up and say what's right, the people who have professional expertise, who can give this management their professional advice and continue to get ignored. I'm sorry that that's the city that we're in right now. It's completely unacceptable that, that we got this far because we say we trust that, but we don't trust that. We ignore our HR professionals when it suits us. We ignore our land, our land sales policies, you know, when it suits us. We just continue to, to bend the rules. And this institution is degrading. We are going in, in the wrong direction. It shouldn't take, I mean, does it, does it really take, you know, outside forces to come in and make us do the right thing? I mean, it's just completely unacceptable to even pretend like this is okay, that this policy should be different for police officers who carry weapons. And to all the police officers who are doing the right thing, answering calls every day, not taking illicit substances, showing up, answering the calls and doing the work, I thank you. I thank you for having the courage to continue to do it, knowing what this administration is handing down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter, the floor is yours. Sharing of ideas. Oh, hold on just a second.
Thank you, sure.
Commissioner Porter, I'm sorry. If you can hold on for just a second.
Sure.
The manager did ask for comment. Mr. Man.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I'll be, I'll be brief. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to leave it to be thought that Cynthia and Abena were absent in this process. So, they provided comments to this commission today. And the reason they did is because they were instrumental in the decision-making. That's their jobs. You can't discount their voice. To say other people had a voice and they don't, that wouldn't be fair. So, I don't want that to be thought, that they came up here and they shared their words because I told them to come share their words. They were the ones in the decision-making mode. And so, I think we, they deserve respect for their professional decisions as well. And I would say that this commission is the one who adopted the policy provision that was exercised by the chief. You voted on it, Commissioner Matlow, you voted on it, and it was exercised. So, I don't think it's fair to characterize that their voice doesn't count, and then you didn't adopt the provision. You did, I didn't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, welcome to the conversation, Mr. Manager.
We're going to move on. Commissioner Porter, you got the floor. It's the sharing of ideas. It's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think as far as this conversation, from what I can tell, we, there's a lot of confusion about how this, how Article 8 got into the contract in the first place. It's something that from the emails I read pertaining to this issue, even our own staff were confused. And that something like this would be included in, that so clearly confuses and contradicts what comes right before it, especially when we're talking about our law enforcement and personnel who have, who have a greater responsibility, who we hold to a higher esteem. You know, I, I understand how we all in our different capacities are responsible, but that is something that should not have happened and that we, I will personally bring up. I think that as far as what I heard from Commissioner Matlow, I don't think there was any disrespect targeted at Ms. Ojitaio or Deputy City Manager Barber. As far as I know, they weren't necessarily the decision-makers per se, so much as involved in, in what was happening here. The decision-makers here seem to me to be you, Mr. City Manager, and our chief. I do think that the consistency is important, the transparency is important. I think we all know that other employees are not given the opportunity to offer an explanation for a positive drug test. I think that everyone, if everyone were given that opportunity, they would have an explanation. And the point that each case is evaluated on its own merit, that may or not be true, but I mean, that's not actually what happens when you have a zero tolerance policy. So, I agree with many of the comments that Commissioner Matlow made. I do find this concerning. I find it a distraction from the work we really need to be doing. I find it harmful to, to law enforcement who have to bear the brunt of these kinds of conversations when by and large, this is not representative of our law enforcement or of our city. So, I did want to weigh in because it's, I think it's really unfortunate. And I think all of this is avoidable and, and a failure, a failure. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Porter, I've got to say, and I want to be clear in this, is that when we make decisions such as this, there are so many people involved. I was not involved in the central decision-making. I supported 1,000%. But the people that you heard from today were. They can't be discounted. Their opinions matter. They're the chief advocates for the thousands of employees that work every day. And I will tell you that the people that you heard from today, they are not going to throw the employees out with the trash. They're going to give them the benefit of the doubt. That's why you heard Deputy City Manager Barber so elaborately tell you the steps that were followed. It was, it was a very difficult decision because we know what the default decision is. But it was carefully considered. It's a tough decision. All of us feel very confident that it was the right decision, tough decision. And, and they were part of that decision-making process, lots and lots of hours in that decision-making process. It was not incidental. And I support them 1,000%. They make good decisions. We collectively make good decisions because we go through that kind of decision-making process. So, I don't, I don't want it to be character, I don't know how we reached the conclusion that it was my decision, I made the decision. I support the decision, I'm the city manager. But that's not how these decisions come about. Ultimately, it was the chief's discretion as a chief of police. But the chief, of course, would consult with the deputy city manager. So, I just need that to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. Maybe my choice of words wasn't perfect. My point is, is that, and I don't deny that they were part of the decision-making process, but ultimately, the chief reports to you or reports to Ms. Barber, and, and they both report to you. So, we're all, in that sense, you all are involved. I mean, that is my point. Clearly, I disagree. I don't think that anyone wants to throw, wants to throw anyone under the bus. That's not really the point. I think it's unfair to even bring that up as if that is the point that I'm trying to make. I read through those emails. I, I mean, obviously, I mean, I don't even think it's worth debating at this point. I've made my, my thoughts clear. I find this to be a failure of leadership. I don't disagree. I don't agree with the decisions that were made. I know that others who work at the city do not agree with the decision that was made. The whole point of the policy is that we don't make, we don't have to make decisions in response to things like this because it results in inconsistencies like this. So, I think this needs to be, the policy or the contract needs to be revisited. And I agree that, I mean, you can see for those in the public, I mean, there were clearly people who disagreed with this, with this decision in this course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Mayor Protim?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I really want to be positive. I want to see end this. We've been here a long time. I want to end this on a positive note. But it is very hard to sit here and listen to folks litigate someone else's decision-making and morality when I sit here as a colleague who two of my colleagues sought to remove me from this commission publicly. That has never happened on any other commission before either. So, to say, to talk about what would not have happened, what didn't happen under Anita Favors or other folk, a lot of things didn't happen because the people had a will to work, to move the city forward and not score points against people who they choose not to have a relationship with. I choose to have a good relationship with our staff, with the city manager, city attorney, currier clerk, and everyone else. And when I have an issue with them, I deal with that issue where I need to deal with it out of the public eye so that when I come to the public, we have gotten it straight and we can do the work that the people hired me to do. They did not hire me to be an attorney, to interrogate people who are doing the best job they can, doing their work. I'm on the phone late at night with the city manager, deputy city manager, trying to deal with real issues in our community. We as commissioners don't deal with personnel issues. My thoughts about what happened are my thoughts. The only person that I can deal with regarding those decisions is the city manager. And my conversation with the city manager and how we deal with it is between us. And everyone out here is not interested in knowing how we fight in, how we fight in private or how we scrap it out or whatever. All they want to know is that when we come to this desk, we're going to handle the people's business, get projects moving in our community. People are sick and hurting and homeless and need help. They don't have time for all of this minutia. So, I, I just, I just had to say this. I've been sitting here holding this since August. I've been pregnant with this. But then today, I'm giving birth because you cannot call the kettle black when you're not doing all that you can. When you have sometime employees who show up, who might need to be looked at because some things that are happening are not correct. So, I think when you start pointing fingers, you got to remember you're pointing something back at yourself. So, this, I'm going to take this opportunity to do a self-reflection and make sure that I'm doing all that I can do to make sure that our city is safe, our people are getting what they need, and we're moving forward, voting for projects that move us forward, affordable housing, housing for the homeless veterans, housing for the homeless, showing up at communities who are looking for us to show up at ribbon cuttings, showing up because we've gotten. who are looking for us to show up at ribbon cuttings, showing up because we've got money allocated for Orange Avenue apartments, showing up because we're building Habitat Houses, showing up in places in our community that may not be the best places for some people to show up, but they're looking for us to show up. When I walk through the grocery store, I want them to know who I am and I don't have to walk around with a sign or badge to tell them who I am. They know who I am because they see me in the community. So I want to end this on a positive note, but I've got to get that out because it ain't right. Decorum, collegiality, all those things that our young people are watching us do, should be doing. We are role models for individuals. And if you don't think they're watching us, paying attention to us, a little girl over at WT Moore did a, a Black History project on me, and I don't even know who she is. She didn't call me. She didn't contact me. She went online to find my footprint, and she did it. I got to go out there and find out who she is. I want that to be the story that's told, not the lies that have been told about me by people who I sit shoulder to shoulder with to move this city forward. Now that, that hurts. It really hurts. But I'm a big girl. I can handle it. But it had, it had to be said because as you interrogate Deputy City Manager and Director Ogentite, I'm feeling that. I'm triggering because here we are again, having to defend ourselves and defend what we've done. Defend the fact that we're smart enough to make the decisions. Defend that we're good enough to be in these positions. And so I'm like the lady who was here earlier. That, that kind of got me going right there. That's, that's got me going because we've been through too much. Not only in this city. We're about to be 200 years old next year. The hell that we've been through, we can't go through it another 200 years. We've got to come together, work together. If that's not what we want to do, go find somewhere else to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not entertaining any-
It's, it's, it's my turn, Commissioner Porter, and I'm going to comment and try to bring this in for a landing and-
Mr. Mayor, I was evoked personally. So I would-
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Have a proper respond.
Let's open this up for discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not even sure where to begin. I think it's pretty clear that we disagree on a lot of issues. And I think for, I believe that collegiality is important, but it is not the most important thing. Covering over issues, not speaking our minds, not holding people accountable. I was not elected to just be nice on the dais. That is not why I, the people who I speak to, elected me. And I too want the people who watch, and there are people who watch me too, as a young woman, just like everyone else. And the legacy that I would want to leave, if I, if I had children, would not be just to be a nice person, but to be someone who speaks the truth and who isn't afraid of pointing out what I think is wrong. Because you are right. People are suffering. And you and every other, every single other commissioner fights to and serves to. You are not the only one.
Is she speaking to me? Or is she speaking in general?
I think Commissioner Porter is speaking in-
I'm speaking generally. I'm speaking generally.
Okay.
I, I again would just ask that we all, that, that we all respect how we choose to be commissioners. I don't think that's so much to ask for. I don't, I have never criticized what, where, what press conferences you go or anything. I just think that's really unfair. And I would be a hypocrite if I didn't stand up for the things that I believe in, the things that I promised to the people, and that includes who represents them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm still waiting on my turn. My goodness. I want to see all four of the appointed officials in my office tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. Please. We stay in the journey.